Quiet down, please. Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Housing and Buildings. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices and at no time is anyone to approach the dais. If you would like to sign up for in-person testimony or have any other questions during the hearing, please see the Sergeant-at-Arms chair. We're ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeants, and good afternoon. I am Councilmember Pirina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Thank you for joining us today for our hearing on the Third-Party Transfer Program. I'd like to thank all members of the public who are here and my colleagues who are present, Councilmember Dinowitz, Councilmember Brewer, Councilmember Abilis, Councilmember Abreu, Councilmember Hudson on Zoom, and a few who will join us. Today, I'm excited to talk about the Third-Party Transfer Program. The program was created almost 30 years ago in the context of a New York City with very different housing and market dynamics than today. Following World War II, New York City's economy was in freefall, impacted by rising prices of fuel, high inflation, and other challenging conditions. Government and private sector policies like redlining devalued certain communities because they housed people of color, and investments like the GI Bill and favorable mortgages for white families fueled white flight and abandonment in urban areas across the country. In New York City, there was a loss of approximately 350,000 private housing units to abandonment and disinvestment between the '60s and the '70s. For example, in 1975, 40,000 dwelling units per year or 3,000 per month were being lost to abandonment. Many owners deferred maintenance and services in their buildings as operating costs increased, knowing that the city would soon foreclose on the property through the city's then-in-rem foreclosure power. As a result, the city had taken title to 5,458 buildings totaling in 51,672 units by 1994. The cost to the city of rehabilitating and maintaining these properties was, on average, $2.2 million per building, approximately $4.24 million a day, and the city was losing approximately $209,000 per building in tax revenue each year. It is in this context that New York City created the Third-Party Transfer Program to forestall further deterioration of the building stock and encourage tax compliance throughout the city. The program allowed the city to foreclose on properties without standing municipal debt, but rather than taking ownership and managing these distressed properties, as it had been doing, the city could transfer properties to a qualified third party to rehabilitate the building. Since the program was created in 1996, there have been 10 rounds. However, the program was put on hold in 2019 following heightened media attention to program administration and myriad calls for reform by impacted persons, elected officials, and advocates. While the Third-Party Transfer has had successes during its nearly 30-year history, its administration also proved extremely problematic. In 2019, the New York City Council found disproportionate impacts to communities of color and instances of apparent misadministration of the program, with HPD both leaving out or being overly lenient on certain properties that could have been included in transfers or foreclosing on properties that apparently should not have gone through the rounds. Yet, six years without a version of New York City using the power of municipal foreclosure has left our housing code enforcement apparatus hamstrung. Across New York City, hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers live in distressed buildings, 10,000 buildings of the 115,000 units, with owners who owe tens of millions of dollars to the city, and these figures are increasing each day. Last week, before the drama, the mayor's management report showed 895,457 B&amp;C class violations were issued in fiscal year '24, a more than 40% increase since fiscal '21, and the number of units affected by emergency repair work has more than doubled since fiscal '21. We're talking about children, families, elderly persons living in mold, vermin, lead, collapsed ceilings, and more. We're talking about New Yorkers like those at 2201/2205 Davidson Avenue, whose owner owes $23 million in unpaid municipal arrears, over $450,000 per unit. The building had cycled through owners who exhibited systematic and cyclical patterns of neglect and had 539 open housing maintenance code violations, 83 open DOB violations dating back to 1989, damaged facade and other structural issues. Just a short walk away, 1915 Billingsley Terrace, which suffered a partial collapse in December of 2023, also had hundreds of open violations at the time, and 705 and 709 West 170th Street in Washington Heights, whose tenants are living with over 700 open housing maintenance code violations. Those tenants live with lead, lead paint, roach, mice, infestations, inadequate electricity, and mold. These buildings should have absolutely gone through TPT, but the program has been inactive. The housing and livelihoods of these tenants have been left to the wayside, and today, I want to be very clear, I'd like to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Ressler. Today, I'd like to acknowledge and be very clear that these living conditions are unacceptable, and I, for one, am sick and tired of touring building after building where tenants are living in inhumane conditions. We need to act now. To that end, today, we're hearing Intro 1063, or what we're calling the Housing Recovery and Resident Protection Act, which overhauls the problematic Third-Party Transfer Program and uses the city's power of municipal foreclosure in a manner that targets the worst buildings in New York City while protecting and expanding homeownership opportunities. To highlight key features of the program, the old program included a block pickup provision, where if one property on a block qualified for the program, then all properties were considered for the Third-Party Transfer and led to buildings inappropriately moving through the program. The 2019 council audit found that 83 non-distressed properties were selected for TPT that were located on the same block as a distressed property, but they were not distressed themselves. The new program eliminates the disastrous block pickup provision. The old program was found to include buildings not in distress. The 2019 council audit revealed that over 50% of properties selected for TPT were not in distress, pointing to possible misadministration of the program, and three properties in particular had $0 in overdue DOF and DEP charges. The new program selects only the worst buildings, those with the most unpaid municipal debt and the most open B&amp;C or hazardous violations. The old program had residents claiming that there was no outreach until after the transfer. There were lawsuits, and the new program, there are more stringent requirements so that all parties, including all shareholders within a cooperative building, for instance, not just the board, know their rights and receive transparent communication. The old program resulted in racial concentration of transfers, with the 2019 finding that 50% of Round 10 properties were in just 11 low-to-moderate-income communities of color out of 195 neighborhoods in the city of New York. The new program will have more rigorous outreach requirements and supports for owner-occupied properties, off-ramps for these properties in particular. The old program attacked homeownership with an overrepresentation of owner-occupied homes, and the new program will create new opportunities for resident ownership, including a process that allows interested residents to partner with qualified third parties to submit a tenant application for ownership. Finally, this might be my longest opening testimony, apologies, colleagues. Finally, the old program did not require repairs in order to exit the round, only payment or payment plans. The new program requires corrective action plans. We cannot leave New Yorkers to suffer living conditions dangerous to their health and safety. Their homes, their lives deserve to be rescued, and we can focus on rescue of properties in the worst conditions while protecting and uplifting and even expanding homeownership and intergenerational wealth-building opportunities. I'd like to thank all of the advocates who engaged with us on this bill draft and have provided thoughtful feedback, and acknowledge that this bill reflects feedback from the 2019 Third-Party Transfer Working Group, testimony from impacted individuals, and more than 50 advocacy organizations in 2019 and 2021 council hearings, which is a reflection of the commitment to try to get this right this time. This introduced bill will not be perfect, even with the amount of input and collaboration reflected in it, so I invite the public to please testify today, of course, or submit testimony within the next 72 hours for the official record. If you miss that, no worries. You might be able to tell that I'm very passionate about this program, so please email my office, reach out, and we'll be here to listen. I look forward to continuing to engage as we continue to make changes to the bill and get the program correctly. I would like to thank my Chief of Staff, Sam Cardenas, my Director of Land Use Policy and Budget, Ben Ratner, and former Director Kadeem Robinson, as well as the Housing and Buildings Committee staff, Taylor Zellany, Ossie Maloney, Jose Conde, Andrew Bourne, Dan Krup, and Reese Higrota. I will now turn it over to Committee Council to administer the oath.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you.
Okay, good morning, or afternoon, it's afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez, and members of the New York City Committee on Housing and Buildings. My name is Kim Darga, Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Development at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I'm joined by colleagues from DOF and DEP, along with Anne Marie Santiago, our Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Enforcement and Neighborhood Services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about Intro 1063 of 2024. We were proud to work alongside both the council and our partners at DOF and DEP earlier this year to improve the city's property tax enforcement, to ensure there is a balance between the city's need to effectively encourage payment of property taxes, which supports all of the great work we do as a city and the challenges faced by property owners paying those bills. Among the improvements we made to cover future tax lane sales, we're creating new noticing touchpains and providing funding for intensive personalized outreach to delinquent owners to help get them back on track with their payments. As we move forward with this improved tax collection strategy, we should, as we have in the past, recognize that there are some properties that need an alternative approach to enforcement through the sale of the tax lanes. Properties with multiple years of unpaid property taxes, water and sewer charges, and other municipal charges, which also have a significant number of recent serious housing maintenance code violations, are clearly buildings in crisis, where the financial distress of a building has impacted the health and safety of the tenants. In addition to tax enforcement, the city has an interest in stabilizing the condition of these properties to keep residents safe in their homes. This recognition resulted in the establishment of the Third-Party Transfer Program as a companion program to the tax lane sale in 1996 by the New York City Council to meet these two goals. TPT aimed to ensure that distressed properties that were unable to satisfy their tax debt or enter payment plans as a show of financial stability were moved into new ownership through foreclosure. Unlike traditional foreclosures, TPT transferred properties to an interim owner, neighborhood restore, HDFC, and then to qualified affordable housing developers for rehabilitation and stabilization with support from HPD. Through TPT, residents remained in their homes with affordability and rent stabilization protections. TPT also offered tenants in qualifying buildings who were interested and able to manage a cooperative housing development the option to petition to become limited equity cooperatives after their buildings were rehabilitated. Since its inception, TPT stabilized over 6,000 homes and approximately 520 buildings, improving housing quality and stability for about 15,000 residents. In response to concerns identified after the most recent round of TPT, a TPT working group was convened in 2019 with the purpose of eliciting ideas for operational improvements to ensure the program was properly focused and achieved its intended purpose to stabilize properties in crisis. The working group included elected officials, members of the HDFC coalition, legal services providers and tenant advocates, MWBE developers, property management firms, and community-based organizations, with information provided by HPD, the Department of Finance, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Law Department. The working group issued a report with recommendations in late 2021 suggesting that the program be modified to include community-based organizations, the offices of elected officials, and other partners in the outreach program in addition to city agencies. Consider providing additional technical assistance to property owners, including possible expansion of the homeowner help desk for one-to-four family homeowners, to provide one-on-one technical, financial, and legal counseling, and the creation of a new owner resource center to provide and expand direct technical assistance and financial support for multifamily properties, including rentals and HDFC cooperatives. Enhance proactive outreach to each applicable owner before initiating a TPT round, and evaluate whether the amount of time provided to owners to address crisis conditions between initial outreach and foreclosure should be changed, and standardize payment plan terms to be the same throughout the in-rem process to avoid overly complicated and confusing pathways to compliance. The working group reviewed and weighed in on several options for selection methodology, the appropriate sources of data, and the criteria for selection and inclusion in the TPT program. While there were different opinions on many of the options provided, the following recommendations garnered the most support from the working group members. Eliminate the current statutory block pickup, which requires that all properties of the same tax class on a block owing taxes for a certain period of time be included in the action, and replace it with a more refined selection methodology. Employ a selection methodology that balances considerations related to the physical and financial crisis conditions of a building with a focus on conditions of life and safety. Include in the selection process all properties with debt in excess of one year for tax class two or three years for tax class one and co-ops of their tax liability, with a threshold for inclusion based on a property's individual annual tax liability and not a citywide threshold. Change the selection and inclusion criteria to apply to one-to-three-family properties tax class one, multifamily rentals tax class two, and co-ops if such properties exhibit crisis conditions, and excluding one-to-three-family properties tax class one that have certain homeowner property tax benefits or exemptions that require homeowner occupancy as filed with the Department of Finance. Consider allowing HDFC co-ops to petition to have an opportunity to become an HDFC cooperative again upon meeting certain requirements after transfer, and explore transferring properties, in particular, class one properties, to community land trusts, among other qualified organizations, as the ultimate owner after the interim ownership stage. We're pleased that City Council has introduced legislation to modernize the program. The proposed legislation modifies various components of the program, including provisions related to eligibility and selection, outreach, redemption requirements, and payment plans. Some of the proposed changes, particularly with regard to eligibility and selection, largely align with the recommendations of the working group, and HPD supports these changes. Other proposed changes deviate from the working group recommendations and raise some concerns. We look forward to continuing to work with City Council to refine the legislation. As the legislation proposes significant changes to eligibility and selection, we want to explain these modifications in depth and provide additional context on the characteristics of the properties that would potentially be included if the city were to commence a round today. On Slide 2 of the presentation, I'm just going to pause, okay. Slide 2 summarizes proposed eligibility criteria and proposed selection methodology. The eligibility would include tax class one properties and cooperatives with delinquent debt that exceeds three years of an owner's annual tax liability, tax class two rentals with delinquent debt that exceeds one year of the owner's annual tax liability. For each property that meets these basic eligibility criteria, HPD would assign a ranking based on properties with the highest to lowest municipal arrears, and then a separate ranking is assigned based on properties with the highest to lowest total open hazardous (Class B) and immediately hazardous (Class C) violations issued and open within the last three years. Then, a score is calculated by multiplying the arrears ranking with the violations ranking. For the purpose of understanding the impact of the potential eligibility and selection criteria and understanding the characteristics of properties, HPD included the top 500 properties in the analysis to be presented today. However, HPD recommends that the number of properties included in TPT rounds and the frequency of these rounds be determined by HPD rather than statute. There are about 770,000 Class I and Class II residential properties excluding condos in New York City, as shown on Slide 3. Is it stuck? Okay, all right. 80% of residential properties do not owe property tax or water sewer charges and did not have any hazardous violations issued between 2020 and 2023 that remain open. Slide 4 shows the frequency and level of arrears and violations for residential properties. Of the 770,000 properties, approximately-
I'm sorry, Deputy, are we looking at the right slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could go back one for a second, so just going to pause. This is showing the distribution of the 770,000 properties. You can see in the green that represents the 80% of those properties that have no outstanding municipal charges and no recent hazardous and immediately hazardous violations. So, we can keep going to the next slide. So, this is Slide 4, showing the 770,000 properties, and then you can see the breakdown of those that have arrears and that meet the minimum eligibility criteria discussed by the working group and included in the proposed legislation. And then the top bit of that pyramid is the top 500 for arrears and municipal charges and violations. That is the analytical sample we'll be talking about. Okay. So, of the 770,000 properties, approximately 16% owe property tax and water arrears to the tune of $2.1 billion. 5% have B&amp;C housing violations issued between 2020 and 2023 that remain open. 2.6%, about 20,000 properties, meet the minimum criteria for eligibility. That is, again, the one or three years of the property's own tax debt, depending on property type. Based on current conditions, an analytical sample of 500 properties in this balanced model would include properties with the following characteristics. So, based on the TPT analytical sample, the properties included in the program would have approximately $492 million in DOF and DEP arrears, representing about a quarter of all arrears among the relevant Class I and Class II properties. Okay, let's move to Slide 5. As shown on Slide 5, properties have an average of $81,000 per unit and an average of $1 million per property in property tax and water arrears. Let's advance to the next slide. On the Housing Quality Index, properties have $27 million in emergency repair charges and $54,000 B&amp;C housing code violations issued between 2020 and 2023 that are still open, representing over 10% of all such violations among the relevant Class I and Class II properties. Advance to Slide 6. As shown on Slide 6, properties with an average of 16 B&amp;C violations per unit, an average of 109 B violations per unit. And on Slide 7, we show the size of the round could be less than 500 properties and be effective at capturing, we can go back one slide, sorry, there we go. Less than 500 properties and be effective at capturing buildings with high amounts of municipal debt, along with housing code violations, reflecting a cohort for selection with both higher municipal debt and physical distress than in the last round of TPT. The final slide, we advance, shows that the balanced model captures buildings that are included in HPD's enhanced enforcement programs such as 7A and AEP. If a TPT round were commenced today, nearly 40% of the properties in the round would also be in enhanced enforcement programs. As HPD has indicated to the council before, we believe that this program would be an important next step for buildings in 7A and AEP that fail to be responsive to the enforcement tools that those programs bring to bear on properties with serious physical challenges and little financial ability to address those challenges. That's the end of the presentation. While we support council's interest in updating the program, we believe the proposed eligibility and selection methodology will identify appropriate properties. There are some areas of the current draft legislation as written that we want to flag for further discussion. Overall, the proposed legislation as written includes changes to requirements around outreach and noticing. While we understand the intention to ensure that all affected owners, residents, and shareholders are informed about the foreclosure risk, some of the proposed changes, including notice earlier in the process and potentially alarming language, could serve to confuse and distress residents whose buildings may not end up going through the foreclosure process at all. Adding notice requirements, including multiple in-person notices, meetings, and personal service, would also require investment of additional resources, and in some cases, may not be feasible. Additionally, there are several areas of the legislation that change the terms and timing of payment plans and a requirement that owners submit corrective action plans. We urge simplicity and consistency with payment plans offered by the Department of Finance during the initial stages of the process to increase transparency, avoid confusion, and allow city agencies to deliver the highest standard of customer service. HPD is fully in support of new legislation that improves the Third-Party Transfer Program, but we cannot support the bill as currently written. We're looking forward to working in partnership with City Council, our sister agencies, and stakeholders to work through the Proposed Housing Rescue and Resident Protection Act to ensure better outcomes for both property owners and the residents and some of the most financially and physically distressed properties in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Oswald Feliz and Councilmember Ressler, who I acknowledged in opening remarks. Okay, so I'm just going to ask a few questions before moving to colleagues, just to be respectful of everybody's time, maximize everybody's time. So, just to start, a broad question. In your view, Deputy Commissioner and the administration, what were the most problematic elements of TPT Round 10 and prior administrations of the program?
So, I think it's the working group really focused a lot on the feedback that various stakeholders had with regard to prior, you know, the existing program, than existing program, and there are a couple main categories that the working group recommended for improvement or modification. The two, I think, or the biggest, is with regard to eligibility and selection, and the proposed legislation that's before us today, I think, for the most part, really aligns with the working group recommendations, particularly with regard to eliminating the block as the smallest geographic area for inclusion, and refining and replacing the block with methodology that identifies buildings that have the highest amount of financial and physical distress as exhibited by administrative data. So, that is certainly the largest recommendation. There were other modifications that the working group recommended. There certainly were some recommendations around outreach and technical assistance, making sure that there was a notice to property owners before commencement of a round to give them a chance to address any issues that might exist. In addition, making sure that residents had notification. There were certainly concerns in the past for HDFC cooperatives specifically, that the notice was going to the HDFC cooperative body and wherever the co-op had indicated their notice should go, but that individual shareholders didn't necessarily hear from the board or whoever the designee was about what was happening. So, there was certainly an interest in making sure that residents had some notification earlier in the process, and that also, in addition to the notice, there was additional technical support available to building owners, and in particular- And in particular, for Class I properties, there was a strong recommendation to create a citywide homeowner help desk. The administration over the last couple years has actually worked toward doing that, adding funding to the budget, and we hope to be able to launch that initiative soon. And in addition, creating an owner resource center for multifamily property owners that not only provides technical assistance, but also can help particularly those owners identify resources that may help them address some of the underlying issues. So those were a couple of the big recommendations. There were also some recommendations around payment plans. In the current law, with regard to DOF payment, there are, the statute dictates what is allowed, and it is different than the types of payment options that property owners that just owe taxes have available to them. And in addition, it changes throughout the IMREM proceeding. And so there was a lot of concern that that added confusion for property owners. And so that, the recommendation was really to streamline those options and to be as consistent with what is available for other property owners as possible. There were some other recommendations too, but I think that outreach and technical assistance, thinking about payment options, and the ability to provide good customer service, and of course, the eligibility and selection methodology, methodology were the kind of big areas of focus coming out of those working group discussions.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Commissioner. So, second, second question, and it flows from the first. I'm surprised to hear you say that you will not, that you are not supporting the bill as written today, given the amount of conversation that we've been having. It's a surprise. I know that there are certain areas of concern, but I didn't expect HPD to be characterizing that this way today. So, can you, can you explain that? What are, what are the, what are the changes in the bill that deviate from the working group's recommendations? And what are HPD's specific concerns to lead you to say today that you do not support the bill as written?
Yeah, so there are a couple areas. I think overall, we're very pleased to see the council introduce legislation to reform the program. And this has been a long time coming. We haven't had, you know, the tax lien sale was just reauthorized and we haven't, we didn't have the, that optionist tax enforcement for many years. And TPT has essentially been on hold since the last round, so basically since the beginning of 2019, late 2018. So we're really pleased to see that we are hoping to move forward and that there's interest with the city council in doing so. I think we really, the, the, the new recommendations or legislation where we think it largely gets it right is in terms of eligibility and selection. The, the proposal pretty closely aligns with the working group recommendations. There's a lot of analysis that goes behind that. Some areas where we think we just need to do some work to refine still, outreach, we go from the current law, which has one required notice of property owners, which is the notice of foreclosure, to dozens and dozens of notices to not just property owners, but every resident, interested parties, posting information on the website, and not just doing it at like, you know, a couple strategic moments, but doing it many, 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 many times. We are really concerned that some of this notice could create undue alarm and confusion if it is preceding the IMREM action, especially for residents. And we are concerned that some of the requirements are, not just create confusion, but are infeasible and would not potentially work the way we would expect council thought they would. So for example, personal service. There's a couple times of personal service in there. There's requirements to mail to every resident. We certainly currently do not have the mailing addresses of every resident in these buildings. So there's some issues like that where I think we understand the intent, and I think the intent we probably agree on. I think there's questions in terms of when and how we can best do that outreach to make sure that the interested parties know. We also think in terms of payment plans, that the, the legislation as currently drafted continues a pretty complex system and structure where the payment options are dictated within statute. They're not aligned with what every other property owner in New York City has available to them, and it changes over the course of the IMREM proceeding. And so for a property owner that's trying to figure out how to address their tax liability, it's a constantly shifting landscape for them. And so we really do believe, and this was a strong recommendation of the working group as well, that we need simplicity, at least up until, an ability to align with the options that are available to every other property owner, at least up until there's an actual judgment of foreclosure. With regard to corrective action plans, I think, so there's kind of two stages I'd like to talk about. First, we think that initially, a requirement related to a corrective action plan doesn't really align with the recommendation to streamline options in initial stages of the IMREM action and make it, again, consistent with what owners have outside of an IMREM action. In the latter stages, we don't think it's sufficient to actually just submit a corrective action plan. So once there's a judgment of foreclosure, we would argue that we need to see proof, right? If we've gone all the way to a judgment of foreclosure and owners not paid or made a payment agreement, at that point in time, they have to actually demonstrate that they have addressed the issues, not just indicate that they will address the issues. So we would go a step farther there. There's a couple other smaller things that we would want to work with council on. There are a number of places where the timelines are longer than in the current statute. And I think we're open to talking about those timelines, but we are concerned that this, the overall impact of lengthening the timeline in multiple places in the law is that the process will potentially double in duration. And that's even after there's a judgment of foreclosure. So currently, the statute, there's, from the judgment of foreclosure, the actual transfer needs to occur eight months later, and there is a 45-day council review period that tolls or pauses that period. Under the current legislation, that timeframe is extended to an entire year. And the council review period is also extended 90 days. So we potentially go from, let's say every, council takes the full for, council review period, nine point five months, to approximately fifteen, fifteen months. And again, I think for, you know, what we've seen historically is that the buildings owners that can pay generally pay and get out in the initial stages. And that the properties toward the end are far less likely to pay because they are facing issues in their buildings that are much more substantial, and that the impact of lengthening that timeframe may be to keep residents in unstable situations longer. So that's something I think is worth discussing in more depth. And I think we're open to the concept of having designated point people. I think it is complex to think about having one point person for the entire city of New York. So I think we just need to talk through logistically how that works best to make sure that owners that are, you know, are trying to pay or enter a payment agreement, how they make sure they can get to the right person. So I think those are the broad areas. Again, I think with regard to intent, there's a lot here we agree with. It's really the, kind of the fine details that we need to work with council on.
Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, I, I mean, I, just on, on length of the, of the timeline, that's something that advocates actually raise as well. They, they don't want to give this much time. Just a quick follow-up. Given the honing of the selection criteria that we're talking about here, owners that can pay, pay to get out of the initial stages in rounds one through 10, but in, in the future, right, in, in the, in the new methodology being proposed, do you, do you foresee that to be, do you think that we're gonna get a similar dynamic?
I mean, I think we expect that if enacted as written today and we end up with a criteria where there's no longer block pickup and you're choosing financially the buildings that are the worst, combined with buildings that have also high housing code violations, we are gonna see a, the number of properties pay or enter in payment agreements will probably drop. Historically, in the first round, 10 rounds of the program, the number of, or the percentage of properties that transferred was below 20%, so more than 80% on average were able, did not transfer. And so we do expect that will likely change. And that's actually one of the reasons why we think it's important that the city have discretion around the number of properties, because there's a lot we don't know about adopting the new criteria in terms of, is it, you know, 30% of the properties that pay? Is it 50%? We don't really know right now. So we do expect that the characteristics will be worse. For, you know, context, in the last round of TPT, buildings had on average about 250,000-ish in debt per building. There were certainly properties that had a lot and would probably be on this list if we had the criteria that's being proposed, but there were also, because of the block pickup, a lot of buildings that had pretty limited debt.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Commissioner. And then the last note I would make is, just an observation. You, you spoke of one required notice today, but I, I think I recall from 2019 and the, all of the conversations since, that HPD always called out trying to reach residents over 70 times throughout the, the round 10 process, and it didn't work in, in many cases. So, I, I hear the concern, but this, this in particular, getting it right and, and making sure that notices are not confusing, completely agree on, on that, but wanting to reach all residents in a, all shareholders in a co-op, I think is very important and worth trying to figure out. And just all owners, right? Because, you know, I'll, I'll ask my other questions later after my colleagues, but we, we need some assurances that the city does know where people, where owners live and how to reach them.
So just, yes, we have supplemented the notices. So there's, the notices, foreclosure is the one that is required in statute. There's an additional notice currently that is in the rules of the program. And that notice is that we flyer the buildings, and that includes where we can get access in the building, that we slip flyers under apartment doors, and a minimum, we post in common areas or on the front door. So those are really the two that are in regulations today. We have substantially, and, you know, added to that. We certainly use information we have on the, you know, property, multiple dwelling registrations. We use the information that DEP and DOF have in terms of contact information for regular bills. So we use all the information we have to try to get ahold of the property owner. And I would say that overall, that has been successful. If more than 80% of the properties are, our owners are acting, that means that the outreach, they are seeing and hearing the outreach. I think the concern that you've raised around HDFC co-ops is a unique issue. And I think that's where we should talk about what potentially would be most effective and think about how we can strategically add outreach in order to make sure that, you know, if the board is not actually informing shareholders, that the shareholders have another means of finding out.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Now gonna turn it over to Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you very much. Quick questions. First of all, how does this fit, and I know we should know this, into the tax lien? That's question number one. Because I have buildings that are vacant, no taxes being paid, 20 years, rats, you know, 100 violations, et cetera. Second, how, on the HDFCs, as a community that I know extremely well from day one, but how does this work with the HDFC? Very difficult group to work with, not necessarily like the owner. And also, how long do buildings stay with neighborhood store? How much do they get paid? How do they play a role? Those are my questions.
Okay. So, this is a companion to the tax lien sale.
Right.
Right? And-
But they're both being new in this situation, that's what I'm asking.
Right. So, the, the way I think this is currently drafted, and we may need to refine this slightly, right? The lien sale legislation was just reauthorized in June. The idea is you have a regular lien sale, and then properties that are meeting the certain distress characteristics as proposed here would not be eligible for the lien sale. If a lien is sold, it's no longer a lien to the city of New York, so it's not eligible to be included in this action.
Yeah, I think you'd make that clearer to people.
Okay.
Because I, I think it's, it is confusing.
Yes, it is confusing.
I know there's a, June 20, I think the 25th of October or November, there's a lien sale coming up. I tried to get the buildings in it, but they're not eligible during this time period, et cetera. So I'm just saying, I think for the public in general, it has to be very clear as to what's what. Particularly if this bill passes, which I hope it does.
Okay, got it.
And then the HDFCs, that's a big mess.
So, yeah-
In general, they're a big mess.
So talk to me, are there-
I don't want to get talked to about HDFCs.
Particular questions?
No. But I just want to know, how, how does this impact HDFCs? That's what I want.
Yeah, so a couple things. The working group rec, so let me take a step back. There are well over 1,250 HDFC co-ops in the city. These are limited equity cooperatives. They were supported in one way or another by the city, right? Land subsidy, tax exemptions, other types of assistance. Most of them have operated really well. They're a success.
I think there are about 78 left.
Yeah, there are about 30% of the HDFC co-ops that are struggling.
Right.
With high financial and/or physical-
So 30% struggling, and another, I thought 78-ish who are in, in REM to go into, they don't like your program.
So they are not eligible for the tax lien sale.
Okay.
Right? They are currently only eligible for third-party transfer.
Okay.
And up until about 2010, 2012, HDFC cooperatives that were in the third-party transfer program were able, like other buildings, the residents were able to petition and submitted petitions saying they wanted to become a cooperative again.
Right.
If they were foreclosed on. That modification was changed, and the intent, I mean, the reason it was changed is, A, we saw some co-op's petitioning could not meet the requirements, and it just dragged on, and we weren't able to stabilize the housing. So to avoid that, and also I think there were concerns that it didn't create the right incentive structure. If you didn't have to pay, you could be foreclosed on and then be a co-op again under the same management, really was like-
Same problems.
Was it gonna actually result in a different outcome for the building? So, there were, I think legitimate issues and concerns. The working group strongly recommended the city rethink this and allow co-ops to petition again. Honestly, if we look at the characteristics of the HDFC co-ops, most of them, not all, but all in round 10, the majority of the residents were actually renters. They were not shareholders. And so, interestingly, by allowing this, we may actually be allowing renters in those buildings to become shareholders. The recommendation is that, that we allow that, but make sure it is with clear requirements and timelines attached, so that we don't end up in a situation where the properties are limbo, trying to convert to cooperative in a way that- in a way that potentially impacts the stability of the housing itself. So I think we are supportive of that. I think there's a, a lot of that is in the draft legislation before us today. The other thing that we really feel is important, and the working group strongly reiterated, is that we build out additional technical assistance for HGFC cooperatives in the city. And so what does that look like? There is a training and technical assistance contract today that is available for kind of governance and operating questions. There are also loan and tax exemption programs. This is really taking it a step further and providing kind of a one-on-one type assistance to look at what is actually contributing, what is causing the issues in the buildings? And how can the co-op actually address those issues? Maybe it's some governance challenges, you know, only a few people that are involved in making decisions.
I'm very aware.
Right. So I think it's, you know, let's allow a second chance with some guardrails, but let's also provide the support upfront.
Okay. And you have the funding for that?
We, interestingly, think we may have the funding to get the owner resource center up and running. We have the homeowner help desk. There's additional funding because of the tax lien sale that we will be using to supplement what is in the homeowner help desk. We are also trying to set up resources for multifamily properties.
Your HGFC would be the hardest owner program.
It's complicated. It's not just one person you're working with.
The others you can handle. Neighborhood Restore was my final question.
Yes. So what exactly remember
Well, how does it work? How much do they get paid? What's their role? Blah, blah, blah.
Okay. So Neighborhood Restore is the
I know what it is, but
Third party that the city has designated to be the interim owner. So back pre-1996, when we, the city foreclosed on property, we took it directly into city ownership. We found that was very inefficient. And so the idea is that we convey to a third party that holds the property, and then we work with that third party and designated developer slash property manager that comes from a qualified list. They manage it during interim timeframe, and then that designated developer and property manager work to secure financing to renovate and stabilize the building. So Neighborhood Restore's primary role is to, they were created specifically for TPT, is specifically to hold the property during that interim stage and make sure that the basic operating needs and critical maintenance are addressed. They work with those property owner manager to make sure that those things are happening.
And how long does that take, and how much does it cost the city?
So how much it takes is a little complicated.
Average, average.
It should be a couple of years. We've had some instances where there's litigation and it takes longer. The last round, there was a higher amount of litigation. And so the average is over four years for them holding the property. That's really a lot less than back in the days of INREM. And in the last round, they have spent $28 million in, on operations. The city, as part of stabilization, once the assigned property manager and developer puts the financing and renovation plan together, we're providing additional support beyond that. So they're really just helping to make sure the critical issues are addressed during that stage. That money largely comes through us providing a fee in the development budget. So once we close on construction financing, they get a fee. That fee goes to establish reserves that then help them with the interim operations.
Okay.
That's complicated. I'm happy to explain more if necessary.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, what is the fee?
I, we just modified it. I think it's $15,000 per unit now. I'd have to double check.
And, and sorry, so that is, that is for Neighborhood Restores, just staffing and operations? Or is that being put in?
So any costs that the building cannot address during that interim ownership stage, they use that fee to establish a reserve, and then they draw on the reserve to cover those costs. So for example, insurance, right? If the roof is leaking and it can't wait for the full renovation, then they will, the sponsor and property owner will submit a request saying there's not enough money in the accounts of the building. We need to replace the roof. We are requesting a draw. Basically, and Neighborhood Restore then covers the cost of those interim kind of critical stabilization activities. So it is really anything that the building can't cover from current revenue that is a critical operating need of the building.
Got it. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Now I want to turn it over to Councilmember Ressler.
Sorry, it is $17,500 now.
Thank you.
I just want to first express my on-the-record disappointment with the chair. You know, I think only a Bronx council member would host, would hold this important hearing while the Met season is on the line. Unfortunately, we're down 2 to nothing. But I appreciate the chair anyway, you know? I do actually want to, jokes aside, commend the chair for her leadership in introducing this legislation. I don't think it can be understated, the controversy that has surrounded this program. And the mayor himself previously called the last iteration of TPT racist. The former, the, you know, directly preceding Housing and Building Chair did the same. It was not an easy thing to update, modify, update and modify this program in a way that makes sense. And I think Chair Sanchez's legislation does just that. So I want to just commend her for her courage and compassion and intelligence in kind of creating a new model for the program that I think we can rally around to preserve this important tool in HPD's arsenal. And, you know, want to thank Deputy Commissioners Darga and Santiago for being here today and for your ongoing service to the city. You know, we need good people now more than ever. But I do find myself, I think, similar to the chair, somewhat confused by the testimony. HPD had worked closely with the working group and certainly was in conversation with the chair prior to the introduction. And then to hear you be opposed to the legislation as written is surprising. So, you know, I heard you testify today, Deputy Commissioner, you know, that one of the main things you heard from the working group was that resident notification need to happen earlier in the process. That was one of the things that was not working well in round 10 and previous rounds of TPT, right? I'm just repeating back to you what you said. So it's confusing to me that, you know, I mean, I get that some of the notification processes may to be, they may need to be updated. But isn't that one of the major things that we're trying to accomplish here? Is earlier notification, better notification, making sure that we're reaching everyone? Because the seizure of property is a big freaking deal, and we want to make sure that people fully understand what's going on and have every opportunity to course correct and address the situation before that occurs?
So again, we absolutely, as I mentioned, we do think that there is room to add some strategic outreach to shareholders. There's one notice currently in the rules. This is drafted as all residents, not necessarily shareholders. And so I think we should talk more about the intent. Is it really to help address some of the concerns that are unique to cooperatives? Or is it to make sure residents of all buildings are aware if their property potentially might be included in an INREM action someday, or is, right? So I think it's really that we just need to work on the details of when and how those notices are happening. And talk about whether this is unique to co-ops or there's need for doing outreach to residents outside of co-ops.
I would think we'd want all residents to know and be aware of what's happening. I think that's what, you know, why the legislation was crafted that way. I certainly support that effort, support that provision. It's, I'm interested, though, perhaps if in, you did the kind of analytical sample of 500 properties. And a chunk of those, I apologize, I don't think we, oh, I have some electronic access to the deck that I didn't quite figure out. But of that subset that would go into the TPT program, did you analyze which were co-ops and which were rentals?
Yeah, so approximately, uh, hang on, I have, let me, let me just pull the specific data here, which I have. So there, of the 500, the vast majority are Class II properties. That's about 458. HGFC cooperatives, there are 81. If we ran around today, that would qualify. Those properties, on average, have $1.9 million per building in municipal charges outstanding and have over four BNC violations per unit.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful. And I was just also interested in trying to understand a sense of scale. My recollection was that it was 60-odd properties in round 10 when, in the last TPT round that we did. If this were, if this version of the, if this legislation were to move forward, based on the analysis you've already conducted, do you have a sense? Do you think that we, do you have a sense of, do you think we would be capturing fewer buildings in a new iteration of TPT with the modifications that we've made?
So historically, the first 10 rounds, at commencement, there were fewer than 500 properties. The last round had 420 properties at start, and there were 62 in 2018 that transferred. There's a couple that have transferred since then because litigation has been resolved. We do think that with the elimination of the block pickup and the proposed alternative methodology that would look at buildings that have the highest amount of municipal charges, violations across all of New York City, that the number of properties that would be able to redeem would probably go down. So we don't know what that percentage would be because we haven't done it before.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you look at round 10, for example, at start, buildings had, on average, about 250,000 a unit in charges. The properties that transferred had about $800,000 on average in municipal debt. So, you know, the buildings that can pay do pay. And the owners that don't have the resources or ability to do so are the more likely to end up to the end, end up in there in the end.
That is helpful. I'll just say, in closing, you know, I thought getting the, providing consistency and simplicity with payment plans offered by the, you know, Department of Finance. Sorry, let me restate that. The feedback you've given in your testimony about offering consistency with the payment plans offered by the Department of Finance, that makes sense to me. I'm not a deep expert, but that, you know, trust our chair, but that seems logical. I think, and I mean this with total respect, I've never encountered a city, I've never had a conversation with city agency where there's been a push for extensive additional outreach, and people have embraced it enthusiastically. I think it's just the nature of the beast that, and that you all think you're doing enough. And I just think for, when it comes to the potential taking a property, necessary as it may be, it really does require us to go above and beyond with that communication and information to all residents in a building. And so, you know, I don't, you know, trust the chair's leadership in navigating a path forward here and negotiating the terms of the bill. But I really think that it's an area where HPD should get uncomfortable and be going above and beyond and making sure that we're really making, we're really informing every single resident of the building, shareholders and tenants and owners, all of the above, depending if it's a rental or a co-op, so that people are aware of what's happening. And, you know, I think this is an important program. I support this bill. I want this to move forward. I want to make sure that the properties that are in worst condition in New York City, that we're able to bring in new landlords that can, that can provide the dignity to tenants that they deserve. I just think we've got to be really deliberate through the process to get there. And I think that's the balance that the chair reached in her legislation. It's why I support it. And hopefully, we can get you guys a little bit uncomfortable with some additional outreach to make it a bill that you all comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. All right, so now I'm going to start my rapid-fire questions. Freedom, okay. Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you so much to my colleagues and for your answers, Deputy Commissioner. Okay, so just getting into the nitty-gritty, wanting to understand and just share out for the public how, how we're talking about the definition of distressed properties. So first question, is there, is there any, are there any other changes that you would make to the definition of distressed property as written in the bill? And then second, you, you mentioned that you would like to have HPD have discretion as to the number of properties that are entering each round of the program. So what, what, how would HPD be interested in selecting those properties? Specifically because we're talking about a new proposed methodology that only has thresholds around the financial, the financial rears, you know, the liens that the property has, and then is indexing. So how, how would you, what additional criteria would you use to decide it should be 500 or 2 million properties in a round?
So I think, so the methodology would be the same, right? You have eligibility, and then you do the indexing. The question is, do you cut off at 250 buildings? You cut off at 400, 500, where you cut off at a moment in time? I think that is a, what we decide is a function of a couple things. First, what do we know about redemption rates, right? So right now, I mentioned, we don't really know how those are going to change. Historically, right, the city invests a fair amount of resources in this program and the stability of the housing that ultimately is transferred. Not only do we support Neighborhood Restore, but we also invest, when the buildings are transferred, in renovations and stabilization. In the last round of TPT, round 10, that was over $160,000 per unit in city capital funding to make sure the buildings are in good condition, along with tax exemptions and other assistance as needed. So if the redemption rate flips and we end up transferring 80, or transferring 80% of the properties instead of 80% redeeming, the potential cost to the city could be very, very different. And so we have to know that when we start an action, that we're going to be able to actually stabilize the housing, right? That is one of the main goals here. So we wouldn't want to set up a program where we thought that that was in question. So I think that's number one. I think, two, we know the characteristics of the top 500 today, right? If we run the data now, based on 2024 data. What we don't know, we haven't had a TPT action. We haven't had tax lien sale in a few years now. Are we looking overall at buildings that are much worse than they would if we had regular tax enforcement happening through those programs? And so, you know, right now, like, it's over a million, about a million dollars per property. Let's say we do a round, and, you know, in two years, we're going to do another one, and the average debt for properties is 500,000. Do we want 500 properties then? Or do we think that maybe it's not targeting the right universe if we go with full 500? And we have to go with a narrower universe of properties in order to, for this to focus on the properties where it makes the most sense, right? So I think we're just, this is a really significant change in the program. And I think we need to be able to monitor. And we need to make sure that over time, as properties' conditions change, that we are able to use the program for the right set of properties.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. So I guess I'm, I've been worried on the, on the other side of that, right? The, the other side of that being, what if, what if 500? What if 400? What if, you know, the, whatever number threshold HPD would like to see go through the program is leaving a lot of properties in that delta between not eligible for the lien sale and eligible for third-party transfer? So, yeah, how do I phrase this question? What is, what would be the remedy for distressed properties in that case? And the residents that are living with them? Those properties in that limbo between lien sale and TPT?
That's a really good question. I think that's a good reason we should take another look at that within That's a really good question. I think that's a good reason we should take another look at that within the legislation. Because I think, right, the ideal is that properties that are exempt from the lien sale because they are distressed, meaning they meet these characteristics of having a high amount of debt, physical conditions, would be the universe that's eligible for TPT, right? I think if, let's say there's 500 of those properties and the city at a moment in time only feels like targeting 300 makes sense, either from a resource perspective and/or from a, um, just what we're seeing in terms of the characteristics of those properties. I think what could be the result is that if those other 200 properties theoretically are not included this time, if conditions remain like that, they may be included in a future round, right? That said, it's pretty complicated and I think that's something we should try to map out together and with some of the folks that work on the lien sale specifically.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. At least we have the same question.
Yeah. Not sure I have the right answer today.
It's all good. We've, we've got a, we've got some time to figure this out. So speaking, speaking of those costs, can you, can you, um, just repeat a little bit about the cost of previous, um, rounds of TPT? So how much, on the legal side, how much does it cost the city to bring a foreclosure action? Or, you know, what are the resources that HPD is dedicating to the action itself? What are the personnel needs that, uh, the, what would be the personnel needs to properly administer the program? And then this, any numbers you can share on the cost of stabilizing properties?
Sure. So, um, first off, I would say this is a tax enforcement program, right, as well as a stabilization program. Because it is a tax enforcement program, we also do collect taxes as part of this program. So in the last round of TPT, it was approximately $30 million. So, you know, that certainly, um, has an impact in terms of the city's ability to provide.
Sorry, Deputy Commissioner, do you have the denominator of how much was owed?
The last round at start, the properties owed about 110 million. So just for context, right, we've talked about today, if we were to use the, um, selection methodology in the draft legislation, we would end up with properties that owe about $492 million. So talking about a very significant amount of municipal debt. So there are four agencies that are involved in administering the program. That is HPD, the Department of Finance, Department of Environmental Protection, and the city's law department. And there are a range of ways in which we invest resources. Prior to transfer, we're coordinating to identify the qualifying properties. There's a lot of data just sharing and analytics that is involved. We're preparing legally, legal filings. We're doing outreach to owners and other interested parties. We're fielding questions about payment and redemption. We're submitting to city council for approval and coordinating with city council. And we're also working to effectuate the foreclosure and manage any related litigation. Upon transfer, we support the work that Neighborhood Restore is doing during their interim ownership stage. And that has meant at times certainly allowing the fee and the budget that I talked about earlier, but it also has meant, um, providing, um, some money for emergency conditions during heat season. Right, we've had that come up from time to time. And, and then we are providing loans, tax incentives, and other assistance, um, in order to stabilize the housing. So as I mentioned, about 164,000 per unit in capital in the last round. We would expect that would be higher in the future, just based on inflation, the last couple of years particularly, and ongoing increases in costs. And, um, property tax exemptions, um, on the residential side, as well as other assistance. In the past, we've offered residents, um, Section 8, in order to help them, um, not be rent burdened or maintenance burdened as part of the work that we're doing. Um, and we have allocated long-term housing tax credits to these projects as well. So that, there's a full range. I mean, if you had questions, certainly DEP and DOF are here. So if there's more questions on the work that they do, we could talk about that.
Yeah, I will have questions for them in particular. For, for Neighborhood Restore, are we talking capital dollars or are those coming out of the expense budget?
So we have allocated, um, CD or expense funding at times. We have, um, the money that is, um, to cover the acquisition fee is typically capital. So it's included in the capital loan that HPD provides to stabilize the housing.
But the fee is expense?
The, no, so we have provided expense or CDBG funding in the past, but the main source is the fee that is in the development budget and we generally use capital to cover that expense.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so in, in previous rounds, hi, Deputy Commissioner Emery Santiago. Some, some code enforcement questions here. Thank you for being here. So in previous rounds, once selected for TPT, once in the round, does HPD inspect or re-inspect the properties to ensure that the physical distress conditions that qualified a property into a round continue to exist and that there are no duplicate violations?
So for the buildings that are selected, for the most part, uh, they are, um, managed or looked at by our asset management team rather than code enforcement. Code enforcement will get involved and continues to respond to complaints that come in. And when work is done, you know, the owners apply to have violations removed. But we don't do daily management of those properties in that way, I think you're asking.
Okay, because one of the concerns that I've heard from advocates, including the HDFC coalition, is that, um, properties will have violations duplicated or items that were closed out aren't reflected in HPD's data and that sort of thing. So is there any sort of quality control that, that happens on that side to verify the condition of, of buildings?
And again, you're asking about before the buildings are selected or once they are selected?
Once they're selected and the foreclosure judgment filing process begins.
At any point during the process, like any owner, someone can come in and request a reinspection of conditions from HPD, from code enforcement, and certainly we will go out and respond to that and remove violations. If that exists, either the conditions are corrected, um, we try to keep duplicates down once we do those types of reinspections.
Okay, got it. So it has to be owner, um, owner-initiated. It's not the agency going in? Okay. Okay, so Department of Finance and Department of Environmental Prote, Protection periodically prepare lists of delinquent taxes, noting how properties can qualify as distressed in, in the existing round or the existing version of the third-party transfer program. Um, and the Department of Finance can remove properties. So how often are properties removed during, during the, the sort of data integrity process? That the, the process that you, you mentioned, Deputy Commissioner Darga, is occurring before filings are, well, documents are filed in court?
So we, so we work, we basically coordinate with DEP and DOF to get information on properties that owe taxes and how much they owe. We are relying on administrative data, so it's the same information that is shared with property owners, right? They're getting their, their bills, they can look at their account. If they're, think that something is incorrect, they can certainly reach out to the agencies and, um, you know, uh, address those issues. So we really rely on that administrative data to determine eligibility.
Okay, so turning to DEP for a second. Hey, DEP, thank you. So at, in at least one case that, that we know of, that the council's aware of, the city foreclosed on a home with paid-off water debt due to a discrepancy in the account number provided by the homeowner. The property was later returned to the homeowner, but the situation raises concerns about the ease with which ratepayers can pay off water debt. So does DEP have a sense of how frequently water and sewer payments are credited to the wrong account?
So that's usually, and just for the record, my name's Albert Kramer, Deputy Commissioner of the Bureau of Customer Services. Pleasure to be here. So in general, that's a very rare occurrence. We, you know, we match the, the payments to the account number provided by the customer. If it's, ends up going due to, you know, a clerical error on the side of the customer, otherwise usually somebody who's intending for a payment to be made notices it's not reflected and contacts us. And we try to be as proactive as possible if we know that, uh, something is remiss.
Thank you, Deputy. Um, and how many, what proportion of ratepayers are signed up for my DEP account?
Absolutely, yeah. So we have 840,000 customers in total. Roughly 64% or 537,000 are signed up for our MyDEP account portal. And so we try our best to work with customers, to meet them where, where they are. We've provided this online access for over a decade now. We also have borough offices if customers prefer to come in person. But we definitely encourage customers to sign up. They can see their billing history, their consumption history. It also allows us to send them leak notifications to let them know that they might have a leak to be addressed.
And do you have a sense of what are the different characteristics between people who are signed up for MyDEP versus not, or owners that are?
So we've, uh, it's a great question. We, we've found that over, over time consistently as properties change, uh, change hand, more and more customers do, do sign up. We haven't done a deep, deep dive to understand, but I think inherently, um, it tends to be, you know, we, we have seniors that are customers that might not be as likely to, to sign up online. But, you know, we encourage all of our customers to do so, but we of course allow customers to pay by written check. We allow customers to pay online without creating a MyDEP account. We're trying to be as customer-friendly as we can.
Do you have any sense of whether ratepayers that have water and sewer debt are more or less likely to have a MyDEP account?
So, so we, not exactly. We ran the numbers and it's roughly, uh, 8% of the enrolled, uh, population has an open sort of a delinquent, delinquent balance?
80?
Eight, sorry. I, I would, I would have had the same reaction. So, you know, we think that's probably a little bit, you know, a little bit less than the, the sort of pattern for, for all customers, which is a little closer to 10%, um, but, uh, yeah.
Very glad it's not 80. Okay.
Same here.
Okay, and so, and, and another for, for DEP, it's important that water and sewer charges accurately reflect water usage before they become a lien against the property. Although DEP allows property owners to dispute water and sewer charges, there is little public information about the results of those disputes. Can you tell us about the, the process by which ratepayers can dispute their water and sewer charges? And approximately how many ratepayers have disputed water and sewer charges with DEP in, say, the last year or whatever timeframe you can offer?
Absolutely. So let me start with the last question and work backwards, Councilmember. So roughly, uh, 15,000 disputes are filed each year. I just want to clarify that we catalog a dispute as both somebody saying, hey, I don't think my charges are correct, and also somebody saying, I know that there was a leak. We send out, you know, tens of thousands of leak notifications. I'd like to apply for DEP's leak forgiveness program.
There's a leak, okay. We'll get there.
Better for worse, all, all thing water bills, happy to talk about. But, um, yes, we, you know, leaks happen, we get it, and as long as customers pay, you know, fix the leak within a set period of time. You know, we're trying to find a balance between water conservation, want to incentivize customers to conserve. We also want to be, uh, we understand that, that leaks happen and provide a, provide a bill, bill relief to that. So roughly half of disputes, as we catalog them, are requests for a leak forgiveness program and roughly half are actually disputing the bill. And we have a three-step review process. There's a initial dispute, uh, then there's a deputy commissioner appeal, and then there's a final dispute to the, to the water board. After, after that, there's a, this Article 78 proceeding like to any, uh, city, city government. Most, most disputes don't rise up that, that rank. They're addressed in the, uh, the initial appeal. And I just want to clarify, you know, we're very much committed to accurate bills, accurate charges. We want to help customers understand why their bill increased. We want to work with them. If they need to enter into a payment agreement, we have very flexible payment agreement terms. If they're not signed up for MyDEP account, I'm so glad you've brought up this topic because we want all of our customers to sign up, to have the power.
Sign up, y'all.
There we go, beautiful. We'll get that on the bill. But, uh, you know, it's, it's really, it's really important to us. And I want to, you know, um, build on what my colleagues at HPD were talking about. You know, administrative process review sounds really cold. We really believe that anytime a customer goes through the lien sale, TPT, or any other enforcement process, we want to make sure these are charges that we stand behind, that we believe are valid. The worst thing, that, that example you brought up at the top sounds like a horribly unfortunate situation that none of us, uh, would want to see happen. So, you know, whether it's TPT or lien sale, we manually review with experienced staff every single account. That doesn't mean we're perfect. If a customer has an active dispute, uh, during that process, we do our best to resolve that dispute and prioritize it. And if the customer was, was right, or there was something on our side, we would, we would remove that. And if through the process, whether it's the lien sale, TPT, and I believe by the nodding I appear is that HPD and DOF do the same thing, we make sure to prioritize that. Because the worst thing we want to do is to have somebody in that type of situation, there's some information we may not have been aware of, go forward with such a, you know, really serious, uh, topic and process like we're talking about now, TPT, lien sale or otherwise.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. And so how, what are the ways that DEP ensures that you have the right contact information for ratepayers?
Absolutely. So the fir, our, our main point of contact is the service address, so sending mail to the actual address of the property. We also have, um, customers who will willingly or voluntarily share additional mailing, uh, address information. The property, you know, this is all 140,000, you know, varies by commercial, multifamily, residential, or single-family. But, you know, we rely on the customer provide additional contact points. We also partner with HPD and the Department of Finance to get additional contact information. Also because of MyDEP account, we actually have a lot of access to email addresses. We try to meet customers where they are, send them email. That's something where we're looking to partner with the Department of Finance, make sure our privacy teams are partnering together. If we can share information we have with our partners to help them reach customers in a way that they might not have been able to themselves, we're happy to do so. But, you know, it's, some, similar outreach challenges. We, we, sometimes it's hard to find these, some customers and, you know, we always, we never want to be in a situation where there's silence on the other end. We're always trying our best to, to get a hold and, and work through things way before we ever get to TPT.
I'm sorry, Deputy Commissioner, they're, they're saying that on the Zoom. Um, if you can just get a little closer to the mic?
Absolutely. Is this better?
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, so then, uh, you know, just dovetailing with that, that desire to, you know, make sure that your information is, is good and that you're reaching the right people and, and all of that. Would, would there ever be, or has there ever been in the previous iterations of tax lien sale or the third-party transfer? Has there, have there been transfers or, uh, proceedings that have begun while charges were being disputed by a property owner, DEP charges?
I, I would have to look back through our records to, to get any, to get the exact. But I would say in, in principle, we always, and again, you know, the amount of properties that were going through the foreclosure process for the last round was, help me out here, 50, 60, something on a much smaller number, enough that we can manually review and as much as possible. If we see something that's amiss, um, you know, we don't want to go through such a serious process if we can avoid it. And that's something I can cer, certainly say going, going forward, we'll do our best to, uh, really make sure we're vigilant on.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. Um, Finance is here? Hey, there you go. All right, thank you. So for, for Department of Finance, um, HPD may have partially answered this for you, but can you describe what the, with sort of like the resource intensiveness or costs associated with that third-party transfer program have been for the Department of Finance?
Okay, hi, my name is Annette Hill. I'm the Deputy Commissioner of, um, Customer Operations of Department of Finance. For us, our course associated with noticing and staffing, I don't have an exact amount, but I could, um, get that if needed. But we, we do most, we pull the information, um, of the outstanding liens and we share it with, um, HPD. So that includes our data, our data staff. And then they'll come back and tell us which properties based on, um, the selection and for the list to be created. So we do, it depends on the noticing and our staffing involved of, um, creating the required list.
If a homeowner has outstanding property tax, that can you, can you walk us through what are the different ways that DOF provides assistance to these homeowners? And for instance, I, I hope this is no longer the case, but I know that the notices that DOF used to send out, if they had outstanding amounts, they were, they were just listed. There was no special notice, there was no special font or anything like that about the arrears, the outstanding arrears. Has that changed? or anything like that about the arrears, the outstanding arrears. Has that changed? And what else does DOF do to let people know that they are delinquent in their property taxes?
Great question. We have done extensive work in improving our noticing to our customers. I, I'm going to apologize because my voice is a little raspy. I have a very bad cold. So, if you need me to explain something or repeat something, please let me know. We have changed our noticing. In the last year, we have worked very diligently on improving our noticing, being very clear as to what is owed and what you need to pay for the lien sale. Moving forward, we'll be highlighting the exact amount needed to be removed from the lien sale. We've also increased our font. We've highlighted and read information that customers should be looking at when they need to make a payment, to know what amount they do. For that to helping them, we have do extensive outreach during our lien sale process. And during the year, we sent out several notices. We have our statement of accounts notices. We have a newly, a new forty-five day notice notification from the, the reauthorization of the lien sale. That's been going out quarterly. We also have information on our website about exemptions, the different types of payment plans. We have a customer help desk, service desk. They could call in for property. They could call for the lien sale. We also, also work very closely for our tax, tax advocate, where they could go and ask questions and they give them information on how to help them reduce their debt and, and, and tell them about the different exemptions availability. And again, like I said, we do a lot of outreach as needed and we, you know, we will work close with any customer who will need help as to how to pay the, how to pay the tax bill, how to prevent them from being in any type of enforcement action.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner Hill. So, have you noticed, have, have any of the no, notice changes that you just described? Have those been implemented?
Yes.
Have you noticed any changes?
Our new noticing about a year and a half ago. I'm just looking for my, my colleague to agree. In August, in August.
Sorry, only, right?
Yeah, my, my, the forty-five day notice was sent out in August, the quarterly noticing based on the reenact, the, the requirement from the tax lien. But, our noticing changes went in over a year ago where we high, where we improved the noticing to make it clearer to all customers.
Have you noticed any, any changes in payments to the Department of Finance?
Well, I will say for the forty-five day notices, we have noticed we took in, I'm trying to remember the exact amount. I believe it was a little bit over forty-five million dollars has come in since the August mailing. I can't say it's exactly related to that, but we, um, we have noticed an improvement in the payments, yes. I stand corrected, two hundred and thirty-five million since we, we sent the notice out in August. And the next quarterly mailing will be going out in October.
Okay, so two hundred and thirty-five million have come in since August. How does, do you have at least how that compares to the previous few quarterly notices?
I don't have that right in front of me, but I'd be happy to get back that information to you.
Okay. Because as you know, we are entertaining some notice requirement changes. So, it'd be helpful to understand how that's going for you all.
Yeah, I'm, we, like I said, we're, we're fine. We're very adamant in making sure our notices are very clear and making sure customers understand why they need to pay and how to keep themselves out of any enforcement action. So, we do work very diligently in looking at, you know, customers' responses and how they're reviewing our notices. So, that's very important to us.
And for the Department of Finance, do you have an online portal? Like my D, my DB to, for owners to pay their property taxes?
Yes, you could pay, you could pay online. There's several ways. You could pay online. You could, you could call in and make payments. You can make payment through the mail, but we do have an online. They could go to CityPay and make their payment right online, yes.
And how are people paying their property taxes?
What do you, explain what you mean how?
How many people are paying online? How many people, or owners are paying online versus mail versus phone?
Information right in front of me, but I'd be happy to get that for you.
So, how does the Department of Finance, what are the ways that you ensure that you have the right contact information for owners and the right, the right ways to reach people?
Okay, so we, we do, um, send the property notice to the, we, we, we send our notice of property information in the beginning of the year. And customers, we rely on our customers to come back and give us their, their correct address. On, online, they could go online and request to have their, their information updated if needed. There is a, a portal. They could go straight to our customer relation management system and write in for the information. They could also let us know if they want to have additional interested parties with their information. We have the ability to have the addition of parties' name added to the mailing list. So, we, when we send notices out, they could also send to interested parties. There's very clear online how to, how to update your information. And we also have a help, the help that call-in center. They could call into our research area, which could, could update right online with them and go us through the process. There's a application online they could fill out if needed. And if they don't know how to fill out the application, we could also walk them through it online.
And you mentioned a, several resources that are available to help rate, ratepayers if they're DEP, but to help property taxpayers to reach DOF, how do you advertise these resources?
It's on our website. It's also every notice that goes out.
Something that's on our website is not an advertisement. That just exists. How do you, is there anything that Department of Finance does proactively to tell the public about the resources?
We have, we have external affairs that actually go out and do talk town halls with, they work with council, very closely with council, to tell them about the benefits that's available to us, to them and how to update their addresses. Every mailing we send, we put in information as to the resources that's available for finance and how to contact us. I'm trying to think of what else. Make sure we give all the right information. And we also work very closely with our partners at HPD to make sure they have the, if there's information they have, if they have in an outreach, we will go, work with them on outreach to make sure we're reaching our customers.
Thank, thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Great, okay. So, coming back to corrective action plans and making them stronger. So, you mentioned Deputy Commissioner Darker that you would like to see corrective action plans be stronger in the, after, after the foreclosure judgment has been dealt. So, what, what does HPD believe the content should be of a corrective action plan or the requirements? What, what does being stricter look like?
Yeah, I think, you know, particular concern, right, we're talking about a universe if we change eligibility and selection criteria, that is going to have a high amount overall of outstanding hazardous and immediately hazardous violations. And so, you know, after some time, after the judgment of foreclosure is issued, we would expect to see evidence that the owner has cleared a significant number of those violations. And in the case of properties and enhanced enforcement programs, that they can meet the requirements to exit those programs.
When you say that you would like to see evidence, you mean that they have the finances in order?
I, I think we can talk about the specific requirement and whether or not that's in statute or in rule. But, we could be talking about the evidence that they have submitted, the documentation necessary to clear the violations, or that they are actually clear from the administrative record. I have my colleague here, so I'm sure she has some thoughts about what that looks like, given that there are certainly times of the year that HPD is extremely busy, especially during heat season and going out to the field. So, I think we'd want to be careful about what exactly is in there in terms of what it would mean from HPD's ability to manage workload. There are certainly other programs that have requirements around clearance of violations. So, I think we would be open to looking at those other requirements to see if they could be suitable here as well.
Thank you. As, as written, the legislation gives HPD the discretion to approve or decline a corrective action plan, what criteria would the department consider when making such a determination?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think this is, so, in the current program, there is discretion for HPD pursuant to the rules to account for a range of factors. And those factors include ability to make payment. There actually has to be proof, not just an intent to pay, but proof of the ability to pay, as well as, and that the, you know, the HPD can account for whether those sources would further destabilize the housing or not. So, just because there is money doesn't mean that the city needs to accept payment toward the end of an MREM action. There is also requirements that we can account for conditions of the property, including the existence of violations. There are a range of other factors we can account for, including findings of harassment of residents. So, there's a very long list of characteristics that the city can account for in looking at whether we would accept payment. I think having flexibility is certainly something that could be helpful. But, we also think that after the judgment of foreclosure, there needs to be clear requirements that show that, that conditions will be addressed and not just a proposal for addressing them.
I can get on board with that. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. So, I lost my train of thought for a second. I blame you, baby. No, baby, baby is perfect. Although, they do get upset when I lean in. They're like, nah, ma, chill. Oh, yes, okay, now I remember. Thank, thank you for your patience. Speaking of, of resources that HPD and the city have available to, to help homeowners, different kinds of homeowners, can you just walk us through where is the homeowner help desk? Where is the office of the homeowner advocate? Where, where are all these different resources? Where do they stand? And to the extent that you all have made progress on your conversations after the lien sale reauthorization, that is called something different, but we all keep calling lien sale. To somebody, somebody's upset somewhere. But, to, to that point, if, if conversations have advanced about what outreach will look like, can you, can you share updates on that end?
Sure. So, um, we worked with council last year to create the office of the homeowner advocate, or the homeowner advocate at HPD. We have appointed, um, there is an appointed person in that role now. And that person coordinates internally with homeowners that reach out and also through a third party that we select, that is also available to do outreach, address homeowner complaints and manage issues, provide technical, legal assistance. We have, we are very close to announcing the relaunch of the homeowner help desk. And the Center for New York City Neighborhoods will be managing that. And that allows us to also have access to the data that they have about outreach and engagement with homeowners. So, that will be part of what the homeowner advocate accounts for. So, that is for class one property owners specifically. We are also working to provide technical assistance and assistance in accessing resources to class two properties. We had a landlord ambassador program pilot that we administered a few years ago that basically was, was administered by a community-based organization, could do kind of a deep assessment with the property owner of conditions and help develop a plan to improve conditions. That was limited to residential property owners. And one of the things we're very interested in doing is expanding that to multifamily cooperatives as well, particularly HDFCs, where we do see currently that about thirty percent are experiencing pretty substantial physical and financial issues. So, that is, uh, we're going to have to go through a procurement process to develop that program. So, that will probably be up and running within the next two years or so. So, those are the two main types of resources. And certainly in both cases, again, the, the homeowner advocate will be connected with the organizations that are administering the other contracts.
Thank you. One, one criticism that I think this legislation, the agencies often, all of us receive, right, is the question of whether the city does enough prior to a, a property entering the lien sale that has a new name or, or the, the third-party transfer in the past. What, what is the administration stance today, right, given, given the changes and new resources that have been added? Are we as a city doing enough to engage property owners and not just engage them and give them information, but provide them resources as well, prior to them becoming, you know, eligible for the lien sale or the future version of the, the third-party transfer program?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, this is something that we've taken really to heart the last few years. We have dramatically expanded outreach and the commitment of resources to do outreach to class one property owners and provided more flexibility in terms of payment over the last couple of years, especially in Department of Finance. There have been some, some changes. There's PTA'd. So, we absolutely are, you know, always looking for ways to improve what we do. On the, like I said, on the multifamily side, we have a huge toolbox at HPD, including the ability to provide property tax, residential property tax exemptions, which would be enhanced if we had J fifty-one. I really hope city council will authorize that program soon. We had J fifty-one. So, but we can provide tax exemptions and loans. And I think the missing part of that toolbox has really been the technical assistance for multifamily property owners. You know, Deputy Commissioner Santiago, certainly we put information out to property owners on the enforcement and compliance side annually, and there are some resources that are noted there. But, there's not really the same kind of like, you know, point person that you can call and say, this is what I'm struggling with. Can you help point me in the right direction in terms of like where I might be able to get help? And we know that there are a lot of city agencies, many of them provide different forms of assistance, but navigating that can be very complicated. So, that is one of the things that we've been really focused on trying to improve.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I also hope we, we get our, we get our ducks in a row on J fifty-one. Yeah, and I, I just welcome that to be part of what is, what is shared with the public, right, and what is shared. And all of this outreach is the different programs and things available for residents to get out of rounds, right? Okay. So, next, just another, another technical question. So, understanding that we're receiving property owner contact information from property owners, how many, and, and if you can share agency by agency or if there's a collective response, but how many property owners, ratepayers, property taxpayers, do we have, you know, not just a mailing address, but also an email address and maybe a cell phone number?
So, I'm, I can turn to my colleague, Deputy Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Santiago in a second. But, we do, certain property owners in New York City have to submit an annual multiple dwelling law registration. And as part of that, they can and should list a variety of contacts and ways in which that we can communicate with them. However, not every owner complies with that requirement and updates the information. And there's not really a way And there's not really a way for the city to know or to force that outside of imposing a fine for not paying, for not registering, right? So I think what is complicated sometimes is that even when there's a mechanism for, for a property owner to update information, not every owner does, right? And, and that's not just updating information. It could be putting your property management company listing them. You know, if it's a HDFC cooperative, shareholders can add themselves as interested parties, right? So there are a variety of ways in which owners can. I think it's a question of when, A, do they know that, right? I think you could ask that question. And B, do they do that? And I think, you know, what we, I certainly have seen is that owners that are not paying their bills, not addressing violations, are often sometimes the same owners that are also not doing their annual registrations, not paying attention to other details. So I'm gonna turn over to my colleague in case she has anything to add in terms of the annual registration and what is on there.
Thank you for that question, council member. So, as you know, property owners are required to register with HPD. We have about 170,000 residential properties that are required to register. For the most part, the larger the property, the more likely they are to register. The most trouble we have with getting registrations from folks are for smaller properties. You can give us an email address on your property registration. It is not currently required. You can provide us with multiple telephone numbers for the owner, the agent of the property. And of course, you need to provide addresses for us to be able to serve violations. We're currently in the property registration season now. We do make every effort to encourage people to register. We send out registration forms if you have not filled it out online. But we do need you to return a hard copy because we need your signature on it. And we are looking for ways always to improve this process. So any suggestions? We're, we're happy to take those back.
Got it. So out of the 170,000 required to register, how many do?
Again, the majority of the bigger buildings register. The ones that, that struggle the most are small properties. We're just coming to the end of the cycle, so as we finish that, I can certainly get the current newest numbers to you. Generally, I would say over 100,000 properties register every year. Most of the properties, I think, don't change a lot of information from year to year. So we do rely on, on older registrations as well. If you don't register this year, we're still using the last current registration that you filed with us.
And who is required to register?
All properties with three or more residential units. And then one and two family properties if neither the owner nor a close-related family member lives at the property. So rental, you know, one and two families.
And does HPD mail to each property?
We do. We mail to each property based on the last information we have for the registration.
Do you, do you mail to the property itself or only to the owner on file?
We mail to the owner on file.
Have you considered mailing to the property?
If we have no information for who the owner is, we mail it to the property. Unfortunately, you know, that's a hit or miss because if the owner, again, if it's a rental property, the owner may not be at the property or receive mail at the property, so.
Got it. So this one and two family homes are not included in HPD's data?
Only if they are rental properties and the owner doesn't live at the property. They are required to register.
DEP?
Yeah, so as stated earlier...
I think your mic is off.
It's close to the mic, but the mic wasn't on. All right, better. So as stated earlier, you know, any of our customers that are registered for my DEP account that provide an email address, we have that as a point of, a point of contact. You know, in addition, service address mailing address. I think, I think a key point of distinction or when trying to communicate with customers, and this is DEP's experience and maybe a shared experience with my colleagues, is that, you know, one, none of us, you know, DEP, we don't want customers to go into foreclosure via TPT or lien sale. That's the last option. And so we're trying to do everything we can to avoid that. And I think that's just a really important thing to, to, to state. And, you know, in terms of communication, a lot of times, we, you know, when a customer first falls behind, we send them, you know, a robo-call after three days, a letter after 30 days, 60 days, 120 days, 180 days, pre-lien warnings. Like, we're, we're going out of our way to try to communicate to these customers. And sometimes they're getting that and they're just not responding. And I think the DOF delinquency notices is a good example of that. If I'm talking out of turn, let me know. It's not like it was magically going to all new addresses. It was going to the same place. It just let customers, property owners know the serious consequences of not paying your property taxes. And people responded by paying their property taxes. And we found the same thing with, with the, with water and sewer debt in terms of, you know, when, when you're raising the, the concept of enforcement, that helps people, you know, brings a sense of urgency that didn't exist before. But we're, we're always trying to find, you know, additional sources, but you know, it's a, this, it's ultimately, we need the property owner to tell us how to, how to reach them. And as, you know, the population is smaller in a world of TPT, you know, you can do advanced, more manual searches, right? You can look at additional things like PropertyShark and others to try to find these property owners as, as best you can.
Thank you. And Department of Finance, how many emails do you have on file? Do you have any cellphone numbers?
We, we do require, when somebody writes in, that they put in their cellphone number or their email address. But again, it's, it's, we ask for it, but people don't always comply, and it's not really a requirement. I don't have, we, we have a very small amount right now on our database of email addresses. We, we're working diligently to try to improve that. We also, as, one of the things I didn't mention, people could go into, we have five business centers where public could go in for information and assistance. So when they do come into, to the business centers and they ask for information, we do, the staff will ask them for their email address, their phone number, so we can update our records. But we don't have an exact, it's a very small amount right now of email addresses.
Okay. Jake, wherever you are, send that over, please. But no, that would, that would be great to know, just to, to see collectively how much, how much we have as we think about these requirements, the requirements in this bill. Okay, the afternoon is, is, the clock is ticking, so let me be a little selective with my final questions here so we can get to public testimony. Give me one second. Okay, so, so just based on post-transfer for the record, HPD, do you have how many properties in round 10 or interested in round 10, but it could be by round or whatever? How many properties were transferred to tenant ownership or CLT ownership? Sorry, the categories being tenant ownership, CLT ownership, nonprofit ownership, or private ownership?
Okay, wait. How many properties were transferred, say that one more time, to what type? To, to tenants?
Tenants, CLT, nonprofit, profit, or private.
So I have four properties that petitioned to become cooperative over the first 10 rounds. Seventy-three properties petitioned, of which 47 converted, 13 remain rentals. 10 buildings are pending conversion because they are in construction or conversion process. Sorry, 13 buildings are pending conversion. And then you asked about, so there were over 520 properties total. I don't have the exact mix of how many went to nonprofit versus for-profit entities. And there, the last round of TPT started in 2015, so nearly a decade ago. And at that point in time, right, that's the point in time where we issue an RFQ, is around the point we start. At that point in time, there were, I think, only one or two active CLTs in New York City. So they have not really been involved in the program.
Got it. And the numbers that you just gave me all were for round 10?
No, that's in total.
So 73 have petitioned, 40 converted, 10 rentals. That was, that's in the whole life since 1996 of the program? Can we follow up and, and receive nonprofit versus private?
I don't know if we have that data going that far back. We may be able to pull, we should be able to pull data on round 10. It would be very manual, but we could probably pull it.
Thank you. And then for tenant petition, their, HPD's rules provide a period for interim, an interim period for HPD to evaluate whether tenants will be approved for eventual ownership of the property. How long is the interim evaluation period?
So there are maybe three stages to think about here. There is what happens prior to a foreclosure. So once the city requests the judgment of foreclosure, we then flyer the building. We notify all residents of the status, as well as the opportunity to petition to be a cooperative. Residents have approximately four months from that point in time. The date would be identified in the notification to them to submit the required materials. And only certain buildings are eligible to petition. So building has to be at least 10 units and 50% occupied. And then they have to be able to identify a sponsor that is interested in working with them. We have a pre-qualified list they can look at. And they also, at least 80% of the residents have to sign the application expressing interest. 80%, sorry. Did I say 50? Okay, sorry. 80%. And then, so that's kind of the first stage. At that point in time, you know, the, the sponsor will work to, after foreclosure, will work to identify the renovation needs and put a financing plan together to stabilize the housing. Once the developer-owner closes on financing, meaning they take title, they have the financing necessary to renovate the building, that then brings us to the next stage. During that period, tenants may need to relocate, so they have to cooperate during the relocation process. And they have to, at least 80% of the residents have to attend training. At least 80% have to be in good standing on their rent payments. At least 80% have to remain interested. And those requirements exist basically through the point in time construction completes and the conversion process starts. So if the residents cannot demonstrate, they can meet those 80% milestones. At that point in time, the property would be deemed ineligible and would be an affordable rental property. So tenants are not displaced as part of that process. But that is the point in time where there has to be a final decision. And our, some of our concern is that sometimes that period has stretched a long time because everybody, we want to give the residents the best chance at converting. It's been, nobody wants to make the hard decision of saying no. And, but it does really need to be a firm line requirement because otherwise you risk destabilizing the housing itself because the property is still oftentimes in construction with a construction loan that needs to be paid.
Thank you. And for these 73 properties, properties that have petitioned for tenant ownership and done so successfully, are they, are they receiving the same kind of financial support that other properties moving through, through TPTR?
Yeah, regardless of whether or not a property is going to be an affordable rental property or a limited equity cooperative, HPD provides the support necessary to make sure the building properties are renovated. We generally provide full residential tax exemptions. And to the extent that it's available at a moment in time, we will provide rental assistance if we have rent-burdened residents.
Thank you. Does HPD have the power to reverse a transfer once it is with Neighborhood Restore?
So HPD does, currently, the city has the discretion if we find that there was some extenuating circumstance to reverse the transfer. We, that is not a decision we take lightly because council has the property qualified and council did basically support the transfer. We have had a couple instances where we made a decision that there was something unknown or a mistake that was made and therefore the property should not transfer. So for example, the situation you talked about earlier, when the owner, where the wrong, the payment went to the wrong account. As soon as we found out that that happened and the owner had attempted to pay correctly preceding the foreclosure, we acted to reverse the transfer. So there are certainly extenuating circumstances like that where it's clear the owner has done what they needed to do and there was a mistake, and we will certainly take action.
Is there a time limit for how long HPD has?
I don't believe there's a time limit in the law, but it certainly would be something where, you know, the, once the property is, qualifies, council approves it, the foreclosure happens, Neighborhood Restore owns it. It would really create significant risk if the city reversed transfers after a significant amount of time.
On average, how long has Neighborhood Restore held title to a property?
So I don't have the average. I can tell you the last round, about half of the properties were in litigation. And so that really delayed the ability to stabilize. And I would just caution us in reforming the program that we are mindful of the design and making sure that it is not super prone to litigation risk. So there are, I think at this point in time, 28 buildings from round 10 that Neighborhood Restore, or properties, I would say, that Neighborhood Restore still owns that are in the interim ownership stage. A lot of those, we expect to close on financing in the coming year, year and a half as litigation has been resolved on a number of those properties.
How many did you say?
There are 28. Eight of those are lots, 20 are buildings. So the lots take a little, if they're going to be developed, they can take a little bit longer to convey. So most of those should be conveyed within the next year, year and a half. And certainly, the pandemic delayed things a little bit in 2020, 2021 as well. Outside of those 28, there are only six other buildings that are still owned by Neighborhood Restore. And all, I believe all of those have had significant litigation, and that's the reason why.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm, I'm stuck on eight lots. So there were Class 4 properties that were transferred in previous rounds?
Class 1 or Class 2 properties, which could include vacant lots.
Which could include vacant lots.
Yes. And in the legislation as drafted, lots, Class 1 or Class 2 lots would be potentially eligible as well.
Would still be.
Yes.
Great. That was actually my last question.
Okay, great.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you all for being here today, for, for your testimony. I'm looking forward to further discussion. I, I know the City Council is not interested in rushing this piece of legislation, so we will continue to have many, many more discussions. And I now look forward to hearing from members of the public after a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, party people. Calling the hearing back to, back to order. So I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind, I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of the third-party transfer program, including the following legislation, intro. number 1063. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I will now call the first panel. Will Depo from ANHD, Paula Segal from Abolish the Tax Lean Sale Coalition and Take Root Justice, and Will Spizak from New, the New Economy Project. And you, you may begin when ready.
Is it on? Okay. Thank you Chair and members of the Housing and Buildings Committee for your opportunity to testify today. I also want to express my appreciation to Councilmember Sanchez for her commitment to fostering collaboration through this process. My name is Will Depu and I'm a senior campaign organizer at ANHD. NHD is one of the city's leading policy advocacy and technical assistance and capacity building organizations. We maintain a membership of 80-plus neighborhood-based and citywide nonprofit organizations that have affordable housing and/or equitable economic development as a central component of their mission. We see the Housing and Rescue Resident Protection Act, formerly known as CPT, as a crucial step in holding negligent landlords accountable and ensuring low-income communities of color can access safe and affordable housing. At ANHD, preserving affordable housing and protecting tenants is central to our mission. It's essential for the city to have an effective mechanism to transfer distressed properties from irresponsible landlords to responsible nonprofit, nonprofit preservation purchasers. In order to best support our members, CDCs and tenant organizing groups, we recommend the following: financial and technical support throughout the process, stricter criteria for class one versus class two to ensure bad landlords do not take advantage of off-ramps designed for homeowners, applying extenuating circumstances to solely to class one violations and excluding BC violations from prior ownership or duplicate violations. We recommend that the property be transferred either to the city or to a qualified third party. We believe that property meant for affordable housing should not go to for-profit developers unless no other nonprofit developer, community land trust has applied and qualified for it. There should be clear information for tenants under rights that is in multiple languages and incorporate text and email notifications. There needs to be inter-agency communication, cross-training for staff from DOF, DDP and NHPD. I just have one point left. To ensure that they understand their roles and responsibilities for each other and promoting streamlined process for the property owners and tenants alike. So we call on the council to take meaningful steps to ensure any reforms not only address our housing challenges but also safeguard their rights and dignity for tenants. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think I'm gonna go over. I hope that's okay. And thank you so much for this hearing. It's been really insightful. I'm also happy if anybody has questions that are burning to maybe try to answer anything. But I'm gonna be delivering testimony on behalf of the Abolish the Tax Lean Sale Coalition. The coalition is made up of grassroots groups and technical assistance providers, New York City Communities for Change, East New York Community Land Trust, Western Queens CLT, Brooklyn Level Up, Bronx Community Land Trust, the North West Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition, the Coalition for Community Advancement, the New Economy Project, the New York City Community Land Initiative, Manny Management, and my organization, Take Root Justice, where I am senior staff attorney in our equitable neighborhoods practice. We're all thrilled that we share a priority for using municipal debt collection as a strategy for tenant protection, for increasing cooperative home ownership opportunities, and for the preservation and development of homes and other community assets. We also share the council's urgency to bring a city foreclosure program for distressed properties back online as a tenant protection matter. The longer we don't have such a program, the more tenants make their homes and buildings that are not safe while landlords shirk their obligations and continue to collect rent. It's really heartening to hear that it sounds like the agency understands that urgency as well and I hope we'll be able to get this done by the end of the year. Our comments on the bill fall into three categories. Which properties should be included in the foreclosure program? Owners' rights and harnessing the preservation powers of community land trusts. We'll be submitting in writing, but I want to share fire-up highlights and respond to a few things that I heard in the conversation. That was awesome and thank you for all your questions before. So first of all, I just want to make sure that that gap that is, that falls between the number of properties that the administration-
Would you like to continue?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much. Thank you. So I just want to make sure that we're really focusing on the properties that fall in the gap between the properties that the agency thinks it can handle administratively for closing on and routing to responsible owners and the properties that have liens sold to privately managed tax lien trusts. And we just want to make sure that we're not recreating a situation where anything that the agency can't handle just goes to these private managers that have no responsibility to you all, that have no accountability to any of the community boards, the board presidents, any of the elected officials in the city. There needs to be an automatic removal from the lien sale based on set criteria, even if actual foreclosure by the city is staged and prioritized to honor capacity limitations. Just want to remind everybody that the taxing trust is not an our ally and it's run by private companies and we've seen decades of its past practice. There are lots of situations where it will not foreclose quickly. And if it does, of course, the property goes to auction to be bid on by the highest bidder, not to be transferred to a responsible vetted landlord by HPD. We also wanted to see language added that were, that would require all vacant land with debt, no matter the tax class, to be routed directly to city foreclosure without any reference to violations. It was really heartening to hear that HPD turns out does have a way to do this with Neighborhood Restore. They're working on eight vacant lots and getting them to developers. That's awesome. Let's get the rest. We are, some vacant land in the city is tax class one, some is tax class two, some is tax class four. How those tax classes got assigned, does not seem to have any rhyme or reason and for some reason, the current program only takes the tax class one and two ones. That makes no sense. Let's get rid of that. We also want to make sure that unoccupied buildings, particularly ones with vacate orders, where there hasn't been any step, there haven't been any steps towards resolution, get the same treatment. Let's get those out of the hands of folks who are warehousing those properties and into the hands of responsible developers as quickly as possible because neighborhoods are suffering. That was number one. Number, I'm gonna go a little faster. Number two, we heard the administration called this a companion program to the lien sale. We absolutely agree with thinking of it that way. And in that light, we want to make sure, and this is Councilmember Brewer, I'm really glad you're here for this. I think this will help. We want to make sure that as the criteria for the new city foreclosure program is revamped, the agency is required to take a look back at all the liens that have been sold and are currently being held by the two remaining tax lien trusts. There's a trust that's called 1998-2, there's a trust called, that's called 2021-A. 2021-A is gonna close soon, maybe by the time this is done, we're just gonna be talking about 1998-2. But either way, once we have these new criteria and this new program, the agency should be required to look back and any liens that were sold on buildings that would otherwise qualify for the program in 2025 should be defected and the process, the process that we're designing today should start for those buildings. And hopefully that'll capture the brownstones you've been really flagging for us, Councilmember Brewer. If that doesn't help, I'm happy to look, look at the specifics, but that should. It also seems like based on the discussion today, that such a review should happen not just once, but maybe at every round of city foreclosure because I'm worried about that gap and it does seem like maybe we're gonna keep selling liens on properties that should be going into city foreclosure. So maybe we just check every year and then we'll all be a little bit less anxious. We want to see, switching gears a little bit to HDFC cooperatives, we want to see some more robust supportive services and at minimum, a majority that, that HPD meet with a majority of shareholders or the duly-elected board of directors to discuss the possibility of renewed regulatory agreements and retroactive exemptions before any payment plan or foreclosure process is pursued. Right now, it's, it is, I think the legislation says it has to provide a notice and that's not enough. And that's, and there has to be either a majority of shareholders or a duly-elected board that is speaking for those shareholders and some verification that, you know, if you're meeting with three people out of a hundred-unit co-op, the rest of the people in that building know what's going on. This is where it gets a little sticky. We are a little worried that there could still be buildings getting, going into the program where what the owner owes to the city is actually less than what the property is worth. And we want to make sure that there's some clarity about how that works, how that accounting is gonna happen. Based on our observations and our research, we actually think that usually it's gonna zero out or what it costs to fix the building, which is a cost the city is gonna take on with its partners is gonna cost more than what the building is worth. But in the few cases where the owner has owed something, we want to make sure that that is handled both ethically and legally. And finally, we want to see, see language adjusted to harness the preservation powers of community land trusts and other community development corporations. The bill as drafted requires HPD to consider whether a third party applying for property disposition is a responsible legal tenant, not-for-profit organization, neighborhood-based for-profit individual organization, or community land trust. We think this language is not strong enough. We think the agency should be prohibited from awarding property to a for-profit unless no legal tenant, not-for-profit organization, or community land trust has expressed a willingness. And a further improvement would be to, to require priority to be given to legal tenants, not-for-profit organizations, and neighborhood-based for-profit organizations or individuals that are partnering with community land trusts. So priority for anybody that's partnering with a CLT for permanent preservation. Thank you so much for the indulgence.
Thank you.
Is this on? Okay. Yeah, good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and members of the Housing Committee. So glad to go after Paula, so I could just pretty much say ditto on everything. But yes, my name is Will Spizak. I'm a senior program associate at New Economy Project, a citywide economic justice organization. We are the co-founders and facilitators of the New York City Community Land Initiative, or NICELY, which is the citywide coalition of community land trusts. And we are members of the Abolish the Tax Lean Sale Coalition, for which Paula just represented our views. So I'm not going to repeat everything Paula just said or, or, you know, go into too much detail. We will be submitting our own written testimony. Just a few things we want to highlight in addition, or to echo what the Abolish the Tax Lean Sale Coalition testimony said. On building selection, you know, just again echoing Paula, we think that, you know, kind of restricting the program to the worst 500 buildings in the city is arbitrary and unnecessary. And we would like to see all properties that qualify based on certain criteria of financially and physically distressed properties be included in the program. The inclusion of vacant and commercial properties in the program is really important for us. So task class four properties, you know, present unique opportunities for CLTs that can acquire vacant lots to build housing or other community needs on them and potentially convert other properties into community centers or community spaces to support local businesses, which many CLTs are currently working on. Again, preference for nonprofits and CLTs is really important in the bill. So we would like to see, you know, stronger language that prioritizes CLTs, nonprofits, and tenant ownership as opposed to for-profit developers.
Would you like to wrap?
Yeah. Last point is, you know, we also think that in regard to pathways for tenant ownership, that CLTs could play an important role as supporting organizations. So we would love to see the, you know, tenant ownership pathway include opportunities for education and collaboration between potential co-op- between potential co-op conversions and community land trusts in the area.
Thank you so much. I think you answered my question, I think you all answered all my questions, but let me just double check. A general question on, on HDFCs, and by the way, to all your organizations, to the three of you, thank you for all of your feedback coming into this hearing. It is much appreciated. For HDFCs, do you have particular interventions that you think would be useful or helpful to help to stabilize them?
I actually want to defer a little bit. My colleague Mike Grinthal isn't here, but he's hopefully going to be submitting written comments on exactly that point. I'm going to nudge him and let him know this was on the record. But the opportunity to enter into a new regulatory agreement is crucial formally, but there is a lot on the backend that needs to happen to support folks in following their own bylaws and understanding compliance, and making sure they have good relationships with their property managers.
Thank, thank you all. I'd now like to call the next panel, Ariel Hirsch from UHAB, Kristi Peal from the Center for New York City Neighborhoods, and Sal Devola from Neighborhood Restore. And you may begin when ready.
Working? Good. Good afternoon. My name is Salvatore Devola. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Restore Housing Development Fund Corporation. I'd like to thank Chairperson Sanchez and the committee members for allowing me to testify today. The introduction to this bill is a critical step forward in creating a renewed path to addressing the needs of our most vulnerable residents who live in physically and financially distressed properties across New York City. For the past five years, with a pause on municipal foreclosures, there have been limited options available to the city to take effective control of properties where negligent owners fail to provide essential services and continue to subject their tenants to hazardous and life-threatening conditions. We are therefore thankful to Councilperson Sanchez and the City Council for spearheading this effort. We support many aspects of the bill and look forward to continuing a dialogue on issues of concern as you seek input on the legislation. The last time the City of New York made significant changes to its foreclosure process was 28 years ago. Local Law 38 of 1996 called for the city to transfer distressed properties directly to responsible new ownership without the city first taking title. The legislation was an outgrowth of a study commissioned by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, which showed that foreclosed or in-rem properties remained in city ownership for far too long, and that large city agencies were not effective in addressing the needs of the residents in distressed properties. By transferring properties directly to a third party, corrective action could be taken quickly and efficiently to address repair needs and provide safe and affordable homes for its residents. The effectuation of that legislation was a third-party transfer program. Neighborhood Restore is a 25-year-old mission-driven nonprofit organization specifically created to oversee the management of properties foreclosed upon by the City of New York through TPT. As a supporting organization of two nationally renowned affordable housing nonprofits, the Local Initiative Support Corporation, or LISC, and Enterprise Community Partners, and with the support of HPD, Neighborhood Restore has improved the quality of life of thousands of low-income families by ensuring that they are living in decent and safe homes. As the temporary, as, as the temporary steward of these properties, we work closely in collaboration with community-based partners to ensure that the most urgent hazardous needs are addressed and tenants are not displaced and rents remain affordable. I just have another page. Is that okay for me? Very quickly.
Would you like to continue?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Where was I? As the temporary steward of these properties, we work in close collaboration with our community-based partners to ensure that the most urgent and hazardous conditions are addressed, that tenants are not displaced and that rents remain affordable. Neighborhood Restore brings a quarter century of experience and knowledge that makes it uniquely qualified to manage the most distressed housing in New York City. By taking title on an interim basis, Neighborhood Restore provides its community-based organizations the time and opportunity to establish relationships with the tenants, assess the physical needs of the buildings, secure rehabilitation financing, and prepare for the final transfer where they oversee the construction and reoccupancy of the buildings by the existing tenants. During Neighborhood Restore's interim ownership, these organizations act as our property managers and handle the day-to-day management of these properties. Since 1999, 594 properties with over 7,500 units of housing located throughout New York City's five boroughs have been included in the TPT program. To date, 34 properties remain in Neighborhood Restore's ownership, with 544 properties having successfully transferred to long-term, locally-based for-profit, community-based nonprofit, and tenant-based ownership. With the transfer of these properties to responsible qualified sponsor owners, the residents live in newly renovated homes with affordable rents that are regulated in perpetuity. While highlighting the achievements in transitioning physically and financially distressed properties into affordable community assets, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the concerns and criticisms raised about some aspects of the TPT program. While the vast majority of in-rem foreclosed properties are multifamily privately-owned occupied buildings, vacant land and vacant buildings that are blights to their communities have also been included, as have Housing Development Fund Corporation cooperatives, more commonly known as HDFC co-ops, and small homes. The inclusion of some properties during the last round of in-rem foreclosures in 2018 and 2019 led many elected officials, advocates, and community groups to stress the need to update various components of the program. A working group was convened to elicit ideas of, for operational improvements, ensure that the program seeks to achieve the stabilization of properties in crisis, and contemplate changes in the criteria for inclusion in TPT. I'm happy to see that this legislation includes some of the recommendations brought forth from the working group, and am hopeful that through continued conversations, additional findings are incorporated into a revamped program. We understand the difficulty in crafting legislation that seeks to address concerns related to different types of properties and ownership structures. It is important to provide safeguards to protect owners who find themselves in financial crisis and need time and assistance to get back on track to allow their properties to remain in their ownership. However, it's equally important not to create escape hatches for negligent landlords who take advantage of the system by forestalling foreclosure without any real effort at addressing their tenant's suffering. The legislation must strike a balance with greater consideration for the needs and rights of residents living in deplorable conditions. Despite issues raised by the city's in-rem foreclosure process, the TPT program has been an effective anti-displacement and anti-abandonment effort that has increased the quality of affordable housing for New York City low-income families, and in turn has fostered neighborhood stabilization. The proposed legislation is a good effort at improving the program by making it more responsive to the needs of the city's residents and neighborhoods. Thank you for your time, interest in our work. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sal. Just a quick, a few follow-ups for you. And agree on all fronts, appreciate the, this feedback and your, your input into the, into this hearing before coming today. Is New York City part of your leadership at all on your board of directors for Neighborhood Restore?
Yes, the deputy commissioner for, deputy commissioner for development is, is on our board.
Thank you. Do you have the, the breakdown of what, where properties, these 594 properties have been transferred to in terms of, you mentioned local for-profit, community-based nonprofit, and tenant-based ownership?
I have some of it. I'm not sure that I have it all, but I will say that there are 73 properties were tenant-petitioned buildings, meaning they were, you know, buildings where the residents opted, petitioned the city to become tenant-owned buildings. And I think there's, there's about, and I would have to double-check these numbers, but I think that there's been about slightly higher amount of buildings have gone to non-for-profits than for-profits, but it's been about an equal split, I would say, somewhere around 250, 260, around that number over the course of the history of the program.
Thank you. That's, that's super helpful. And is there anything that you'd like to highlight that is missing from the working group's recommendations that didn't make it into the legislation?
I think what's important is, I think, the, the, the efficiency is important. People have complained about the fact that it's very confusing when there, when there's the foreclosure happening, and they have to go to the Department of Finance, they have to go to DEP. Prior to round 10, residents who were in this situation, I think, used to only go to the Department of Finance, and they were able to address their water bill liens and their real estate liens. And I think at some point between round nine and round 10, which is basically from 2011 to 2018, I think there was a change where you had to go to both agencies. I think you guys should really consider going back to like a one-stop shop, which is really important. I also think that, and I see it in the legislation here, a lot of the upfront outreach efforts, I think, are great. I do fear that with government, things aren't necessarily efficient. And so the concern is legislating a lot of these things can make them inefficient. Sometimes it's better to actually limit what's in the statute and maybe transfer it into the rules and the policies and procedures of the program, which I think then gives the flexibility, which I think you're seeking.
Thank you so much, Sal. Great. Hey, Kristi.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez, members of the committee. Thank you so much for the hearing, the opportunity to testify. My name is Kristi Peal. I'm the CEO and executive director of the Center for New York City Neighborhoods. We work with homeowners across New York City to offer free, high-quality housing services. And we've served over 250,000 homeowners since our founding in response to the foreclosure crisis in 2008. We're very supportive of the intentions behind the Housing Recovery and Residential Protection Act in addressing profoundly unsafe housing conditions while also protecting affordable homeownership. In particular, we think that removing the block sweep will help mitigate some of the impact that we saw where BIPOC homeowners and communities in particular were impacted. And we would love to work with the council to continue to drive towards clarity and simplicity for owner occupants in particular, and understanding how this legislation aligns and dovetails and deviates from the newly enacted tax lien sale legislation. We think it's very confusing for all of us, and we imagine that all these non-professional landlords out there are going to be similarly confuddled. So we thought in the tax lien, I'm sorry, the TPT working group, the smaller group that was working on small homes, we had advocated for a separate pathway or even an exemption for tax class one properties. We thought, you heard the deputy commissioner say there's a robust toolbox for multifamily property owners. There is not as robust a set of tools for small homes. We are really relying on individual outreach, community-based outreach, education, engagement, advocacy, one-on-one representation, and a limited number of repair resources to address unsafe building conditions. But we don't have the same tax exemptions, so we really would like to see a separate and robust pathway and pipeline and process for tax cost one properties. And I would say that we could, one example of a way-
You may conclude.
Way to simplify things is to look at the Philadelphia Homestead tax exemption, where you can declare owner occupancy in a much more simplified way, where you don't have to have been previously approved for a tax exemption in order to qualify. They just, they, they require an affidavit and two, proof, two sources of proof of residency. Also, we think in order for the goals of this legislation to be realized, we need to make sure we're fully making property owners whole on the equity side, so it's not subject to the same legislative challenges that we have seen under Hennepin. And obviously, in order to keep properties out of the situation where they're going to have significant financial and physical distress, we need to radically increase the resources for small property owners and also for the mission-driven CLTs and, and providers who, mission-driven developers who are going to work with properties on the backend. We know that for every dollar, as NHD said last week, you know, for every dollar in disinvestment, we need, you know, several dollars more to put back in in capital. So the CLTs in particular that are operating now, they need resources to support those operations, especially if they're going to be contemplating taking on distressed properties alongside their mission-driven developer colleagues. So for that, thank you again, and we look forward to working with you on making sure that we can have this be as aligned and simple as possible to keep well-intentioned homeowner landlords off the tax lien and, and TPT foreclosure process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's really helpful.
All right. Hi, Jim. Sorry. Hi, Chair Sanchez, members of the committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. My name is Ariel Hirsch, and I am the Director of Policy and New Projects at UHAB. For 50 years, UHAB has empowered low and moderate income residents to take control of their housing and become homeowners in the buildings where they already live. And we've done that, especially over the last over 22 years through TPT, including nearly 1,000 distressed rental units that have been transferred or in the process of becoming transformed into safe and stable homes where residents have the opportunity for affordable homeownership. I'm going to try to be brief since I know the clock is ticking, but I do want to say that we really are heartened by the council's interest in engaging seriously, which with what we know is a difficult and deeply fraught piece of legislation, and seriously engaging with the issues here, and really want to uplift this effort to improve living conditions in aging and distressed buildings for the tenants in them, and to reform some of those past mistakes. To really, we want to affirm prioritizing the most distressed properties, improving outreach and notice requirements to residents, and really focusing on helping homeowners get back on track before a crisis while also protecting them from speculators and scams. We also think that there are sort of a small bucket of additional improvements that we would love to keep talking about to really accomplish those shared goals of safe and dignified housing, and want to highlight that once a building is designated for foreclosure, we really want to lift up that it must swiftly move through the program towards comprehensive repairs. We deal with many of these as a sponsor and developer on these projects, and the longer that they sit waiting for that capital investment from a construction loan closing, the more intractable these issues get. We also must create off-ramps for HDFC cooperatives that address governance first and really look at long-term financial- May I? Thank you. Long-term financial and capital needs planning. I am really interested in the discussion today around corrective action plans and would really want to highlight that giving HDFCs in particular the opportunity to work with an HPD-approved monitor to create a corrective action plan and then make meaningful milestones on that step would be huge, as we know that this is a multifocal issue, not simply one of tax distress. And we were really encouraged to see that ability to remove tax class one properties in existing HPD loan pipelines from the TPT list, and think that should be extended to HDFC cooperatives. We know that we're currently working with over 40 HDFC cooperatives in the HPD preservation programs like GHPP and PLP loans, where shareholders are working to address those property tax arrears and invest in capital needs proactively, and really want to see that folks who are doing the work to get their buildings and their cooperatives back into shape are not penalized for doing so. And we know that, of course, this program is going to need additional capital funding to ensure the pipeline moves smoothly. Many of the round 10 projects, including some of ours, waited five-plus years for construction closing. Again, the longer those buildings sit, the harder it gets. And we have sort of a bucket of additional resources and programs that we think might really help address some of the root causes of those physical, financial, and organizational symptoms of distress that we see, particularly in HDFC co-ops. They include additional capital funding for HPD preservation pipelines, like the ones I mentioned, the green housing preservation program, and the participation loan program, as well as having HPD really engage with HDFC cooperatives on the current version of the HPD Cooperative Regulatory Agreement to address outstanding issues and really collaboratively work with the community to find a better version of this document. We also think that more HPD and DEP programs should be expanded to include HDFC cooperatives and help them address that physical and financial distress, including the Unlocking Doors Program, the DEP Amnesty Program, and the Landlord Ambassador Program, which I was so heartened to see Deputy Commissioner mention is on track to being expanded. So in brief, and thank you again for the opportunity to testify. I welcome any questions specifically about HDFC cooperatives.
Done. Okay. No, this is, this is really helpful. So a quick follow-up for you, Kristi, on the exemption of class one properties. Are you, are you calling for a wholesale exemption or for owner-occupied class one properties?
We understand that there's currently an exemption for owner-occupied class, tax class one properties in the legislation as written. And we thought that we could tighten up the, or make a little bit clearer how a property owner- or make a little bit clearer how a property owner gets, verifies that they're an owner-occupant, right? Because right now, it seems like you have to have been enrolled in one of the DOF programs. We know that there are a lot of challenges with ongoing eligibility and enrollment in a lot of those exemptions, and we think that there are other property owners who are owner-occupants who may not be qualified for those exemptions. So that's why we thought that the definition coming out of Philadelphia was a little bit easier to, for struggling homeowners in particular, to manage and demonstrate that they are a bona fide homeowner occupant. In general, though, I think that having a separate pathway and a separate set of resources and tools that work with the smaller buildings would be something for us to consider. You know, a great example is that if you're going through a home repair program with HPD, you have to go through the same city capital approval process that you do if you're, you know, a 10, 20, 50-unit building. And that's just, you know, it's a lot of time, again, time is money in all these projects, to layer onto a small building. So the more that we can think about faster approval processes, cheaper programs that can be better allocated on a per-unit basis for, you know, one-to-three or even a one-to-four family building, I think it'll make a big difference. Obviously, we know that there's, I think if you used the HPD's sample they described today, I think we backed into it that around 42 of those 500 properties could have been tax class one properties. So if they have such significant physical and financial distress that they were pulled into that screen, those are very problematic properties, and we wouldn't want them to be exempt from city oversight. But we absolutely want to have intention around how we bring those properties onto CLTs in bulk. You know, we've been working with UHAB and Manny and Habitat to figure out how to bring smaller properties onto the inner borough CLT, and it becomes challenging from a legal perspective when you think about having multiple small buildings in a co-op. So what's the ownership structure, and how do you make sure you're not burdening those smaller properties with the same costs that you have to allocate on a big, you know, 50 to 100-unit building basis? So more work to be done there, but obviously want to be able to protect the tenants in those small buildings as well.
Thank you so much. That's really helpful. And Ariel, you mentioned changes to the sort of base regulatory agreements that are used for HDFCs. Do you have specific, welcome you to share them now or in the many conversations we'll have after this, but just specific changes and requirements that HPD should include?
Yeah, I'd love to follow up in more specific detail. I think in general, they fall into two categories for us. We see them either as additional requirements that create an administrative burden on the cooperative, that buildings may have a hard time submitting yearly affidavits, keeping up with compliance on top of hefty, you know, city compliance requirements as it is, especially for small buildings, as Christy was mentioning. These tend to be additional sort of hurdles to jump through for a small number of shareholders who are operating and managing their buildings. So certainly, things that sit within that sort of, things that make it more difficult to sort of like operate and maintain a building, and then also provisions that create a financial burden on the cooperative. We've seen this specifically in additional provisions around marketing requirements in mandatory bookkeeping, and then certainly, we know that there are critiques around monitoring fees and, sorry, property management, of course. And, you know, there are complicated range and specificity of issues out there that I'd love to discuss with the nuance that those things really deserve, but I think that's the sort of like broad structure that those fit in. And I'd love to also mention that UHAB is internally and externally with staff and HDFC shareholders going through a comprehensive review of the regulatory program, so we're not only saying that this is our sort of organizational opinion and stance on that document, but we really want to ask HDFC shareholders who are successfully owning and operating and managing their buildings what the substance of the regulatory agreement would change in the way that they relate to themselves, their neighbors, and their fellow shareholders, and to really be able to engage, again, with the substance that it deserves.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd now like to call up the next panel, Adam Roberts from the New York Apartment Association, Patrick Boyle from Enterprise, and Theo Chino from the Social Democrats of America. Oh, I'm sorry. And you may begin when ready.
Thank you for holding this hearing. I am Adam Roberts, testifying on behalf of the New York Apartment Association, also known as NIA. NIA is a newly formed trade group representing multifamily housing providers across New York City. Our members provide more than 1 million units of rental housing, most of which are subject to rent stabilization and built before 1974, meaning they do not receive 421A or other subsidies. We'd like to thank the council for reevaluating the third-party transfer program, though changes in the bill would not improve the program. Regarding the specifics of the bill, the bill codifies one of the most unjust aspects of the program, which is the seizure of property for tax liens. The new definition of unpaid tax liens is dangerously low, only one year of the owner's annual tax liability. This puts any building behind on paying their taxes in danger. Additionally, this bill would increase the number of buildings at risk of being seized. The bill requires HPD to maintain a list of no fewer than 500 properties. Buildings are subject to the list based on multiplying the property's municipal debt by the property's total open hazardous and immediately hazardous maintenance code violations, a formula which does not account for the size of a building, as these are not violations per unit or resident. It also fails to consider the tax burden, such as the ratio of municipal debt to income. While clear steps are set forth on methods to cure, doing so will be impossible for most buildings. The bill states that a default may be cured upon payment within 60 days from the date of default, but few buildings that go into default will be able to make such a payment so quickly, since they're in default due to their inability to pay in the first place. Based on how the previous program was run, the new tenant opportunity to purchase provisions in this bill is evident that the council seeks to transfer these buildings to tenant and nonprofit ownership. However, transferring ownership will not change the fact that these buildings lack the income to pay taxes, water bills, and fixed violations. Looking at HPD's AEP, 14% of buildings or subject to the program are HDFCs, and 3% of all HDFCs are now on the AEP, and 80% of HDFCs in the AEP are rent-stabilized units. And so even if upon conversion, tenant owners face the same structural problems other owners of rent-stabilized housing face, and not surprisingly, 76% of buildings on the AEP are rent-stabilized. And I'll very quickly conclude that without structural reforms, such as legalizing the ability to recoup the cost of renovations, allowing for rents to keep pace with inflation, shifting the tax burden away from rent-stabilized housing, and collecting unpaid rent in housing court, the new owners of these buildings will fail as the previous ones did. Instead of pursuing this bill, the council should pursue things like a diversion program in housing court for non-payment cases. Thank you so much for holding this hearing today.
Thank you, Adam. So is your position that no version of this program should exist?
I would say that certainly, we would like to see it improved, but there are much larger financial issues behind why these buildings are being seized by the city than simply the way this program's structured. And frankly, most of our members are paying their taxes, they are paying their water bills, and if their buildings are being seized, which many of them are now, it's mostly by banks because they took out a loan to maintain the building or purchase the building, and they're no longer able to repay the loan.
And do you have members that would, understanding the methodology is a bit complex to sort of administer as a layperson, but is it your position that you would have a lot of members that are caught up in being one of the 500 worst properties in the city of New York in terms of physical distress?
I think certainly for a lot of smaller owners nowadays, it's just financially impossible to manage these buildings, so it could be many of them fall under here. I'd say our larger owners are actually probably the ones where these are being transferred to, but, you know, we want to make sure that everyone, no matter their size, is able to run a building and not have it seized by the city.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
Hi, my name is Patrick Boyle. I'm a Senior Director with Enterprise Community Partners, a national affordable housing nonprofit organization. Want to thank the Chair and the members of the committee for the opportunity to deliver testimony about this critically important program. As one of the organizations that played a leading role in informing the creation and structure of the TPT program initially, and as a member of the 2021, the working group that released a set of recommendations in 2021, Enterprise is very invested in the program's future and success. As you know, there were many concerns about how properties were included in the program and how the program was administered previously, and we shared in those concerns. And to that end, we're pleased that Intro 1063 has been introduced and that TPT is on a pathway to being relaunched. We feel this legislation takes clear measures to be responsive to the chief concerns over TPT, and overall, this is a significant step in the right direction toward a more targeted and transparent program for owners and residents. We have a number of components of the bill that we'll respond to. In the testimony, one is the new methodology that's created that replaces the block pickup requirement, which we feel like is an appropriate balance, and we feel like is a methodology that is focusing on the most distressed assets and feel like it's a real step in the right direction in terms of the prior methodology from the previous iteration of the program. A few other notes on sort of interim and long-term ownership. Given the conditions of the buildings and the residents living in these conditions, we feel that the most sort of important component of the interim owner and the long-term ownership should really be about who has the capacity and the expertise and the resources to bring these properties up to rehab standards, to work with residents, to work through complicated legal processes. So legislation should not define who the entities are that should be part of this process, but rather, it should be driven by who has the expertise and the capacity to be able to take on this work. And I'll just wrap up very briefly by saying that the relaunch of the TPT program and sort of all the provisions of this bill, we feel like there's a real benefit to leaving some of this prescription up to city agencies on outreach, on method of outreach, on sort of language of outreach, that certain components of the bill, all the prescriptive nature that's written into the legislation, just, you know, could potentially open up to lawsuits and other challenges down the line. So we do see some benefit to that agency flexibility in this process rather than being so heavily prescribed in the legislation. But for more nuanced responses to the bill, we'll direct you to the written testimony and just thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Patrick.
Thank you. Dear Councilman Sanchez, my name is Theo Chino, and I serve as the First Secretary of the Social Democrat of America, also known internationally as the Committee of the Second Socialist International. We are the socialist faction inside the Democratic Party. Given that I only have two minutes, I won't waste time with diplomacy. Let me be clear, this bill is racist, paternalistic, and a textbook example of systematic governmental racism. No matter how you spin it as a collective, your actions are perpetrating racism. The bill should be known as Aunt Jen and Uncle Tom Bill. The only way third-party transfer program can work is if it's paired with tenant opportunity to purchase act. This would ensure tenants are the true beneficiary, not some shady nonprofit set up by developer with questionable intention. The deed should go to the tenant themselves, period. Why are these nonprofits allowed to raise the rent on rent control and rent-stabilized tenant while private sector is prohibited to do so using Title 15 of the Finance State law? I speak from experience. I am a resident at 640 Riverside Drive, a building that was transferred on the TPT program following City Council Resolution 105 back in 2003. Herbin Homesteading Assistant Board, or UHAB, received a deed for $1 in 2004 from Neighborhood Restore. Fast forward 20 years, and $100 million later, and the building still hasn't been transferred to the tenant as promised. Worse, our rent is set to skyrocket from $400 in average to $2,000 starting tomorrow, October 1st. It's attached in the documentation. According to the documentation, the rent is going to also subsidize actress Rosario Dawson Mauder apartment on 13th Street. For 15 years, tenants in my building have fought to expose the corruption with the TPT program. Nearly everybody involved has since retired, except for UHAB lawyer Anya Irons and their director, Brent Sherman. As usual, new face, plead ignorance, we've seen it here before. Please allow me to continue, I'm very quick. Corrupt HPD Commissioner like Hanmar Hendrickson conveniently vanished after being exposed in the last hearing back in 2019. At this point, it's just not my story, it's the story of countless black and brown tenants who repeatedly reached out to the Department of Investigation, the FBI, the Attorney General, the District Attorney of the Five Borough, and the Department of Justice, only to be ignored. Let me reiterate, the title should go directly to the tenant, not some nonprofit set up by shady developer. Brent Sherman from UHAB advised an above-income tenant to apply to Section 8, to be denied and in tenure when he retired to visit Sean Abreu's office explaining it was political. Since UHAB has made this issue political, the Social Democrat of America has launched the Red My Block program to educate citizens about partisan politics, whether Democrat, Republican, or independent. Through this, I've seen firsthand how organizations like UHAB and Riceboro have infiltrated the New York City political and journalist sphere. To combat this, we sponsored documentary, "County," now available to Srinan PBS. As a socialist, I firmly believe tenants who want to become owner should receive the deed through fair, mean, and organized via limited liability corporation, a nonprofit that pays its fair share of property expense. However, allowing shoddy organization like UHAB and Riceboro to hold the title is nothing more than an extension of corruption. It's no surprise UHAB supports this bill, it provides them a lifeline to hide what they have done to the residents of 640 Riverside Drive, 644, and countless others. This bill, if allowed to pass, as it is, would only perpetrate the legacy of racial redlining initially set up by the bank to prevent black and brown community from building wealth. We, as the Social Democrat of America, are committed to educating the public until all these racist liberal policies are dismantled. As for me, starting tomorrow, I will initiate a rent strike as tenant in what I can only describe as a criminal enterprise. I will be demanding full accounting of where the $100 million has gone, and I'm available to answer any question you may have.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to say all that.
Mr. Roberts, are there parts of the bill that could be changed so that owners would have more of a chance to redeem whatever and to make changes to their property, blah, blah, blah? What would you suggest?
Sure, so that's a good question. I'd say making sure it's not a minimum of 500 properties is really key. Like, the AEP is nowhere near 500 properties, and, you know, as HPD testified, this is drawing from a similar list of buildings. Also, making sure that perhaps there's a way to cure that isn't just a payment, because almost all of these buildings are in the situation because the owner can't pay, whether that owner is one of our members or an HDFC. So making sure there is some other way that you can cure. And also, perhaps being a little more lenient with more than just one year of property taxes, that's not that long. I mean, again, as HPD testified, it's a lot of buildings, so those are a few places where there could be some changes.
Thank you. And then for Enterprise, are you also trying to figure out how to deal with some of the HDFC issues? Is Enterprise focused on that, or is it other than HDFC?
In terms of the testimony we've submitted, we really just kind of focus on this as an affordable housing program and really kind of a pipeline to create affordable housing, and that's sort of been the chief way that we view the importance of TPT, both in kind of how we started it, you know, had a role in kind of shaping the launch of it and then have followed it over time. So we would just like to see it kind of strengthen as that pipeline to let groups be able to really turn these properties around on behalf of the tenants, so that's really kind of the frame in which we're kind of looking at and shaping our testimony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. For Mr. Chino, would you be, so you would be supportive of a version of this legislation that only included tenant ownership?
The thing is, I'm for legislation that get the path of the bill to the tenant, an entity that will be controlled by the tenant and not by nonprofit UHAB, who then says, "We're the owner, and in fact, you're not the owner." And that's what happened at many tenant association board, that they discover seven, eight, nine months when they start questioning, "Why are we spending on Ethernet cable in the building?" And they say, "Oh, we're the owner, we came up with that, and tough luck, there is nothing you can say to know." And in my case, because I'm very inquisitive, they actually changed the bylaws of the board to make sure that there would be an element that would create, that would make, that would create dissension inside the tenant association. So they would say, they would come back to you like today, "Oh, we couldn't work with this building because the board is not together." And we heard that many times over and over. And I would be for any bill that give the power to the tenant who wants to go into a third party, but where the nonprofit, the for-profit, or whoever entity is around, the CTO, the tenant are the real decision-maker that can say yes or no. And if there is a problem later on, the sponsor can refer to the court to say, "We need this to happen," and the tenant are not understanding that. But instead- but instead of the other way around.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much all. Appreciate it. And I'd like to call up the next panel, not the final panel, the next panel, Richard Reed, representing himself, Josefina Sanfilu, and, sorry if I mispronounced that, and Annie Wilson.
Sure, I'm going to be providing written testimony, but these are documents to share with the panel here. And here's a few more. I know that's not enough for everybody, but just as examples.
You may begin when ready.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Richard Reed. My family resides at 640 Riverside Drive. I would like to address, I've heard a lot of things about taxes, violations, stabilization, living conditions. And I think that the housing stock really needs to be addressed in terms of having it be decent for citizens. My problem is, through the third-party transfer program, tenants end up with a situation where their rents are being doubled and tripled. At 640, 640 Riverside Drive, that is the case. So the housing stock has been improved, but the tenants can't afford the apartments anymore. So that's what I would like to address. And I hope that something can be done about that situation, because it's really untenable.
Hi, I'm Annie Wilson. I was co-founder of 544 East 13th Street HDFC. I lived there in 1984 and helped structure the building towards an HDFC with UHAB and supported the transfer of the properties, along with Margarita Lopez, who was the city councilperson at the time in 2002 with what was a land disposition agreement, whereby there would be two years to complete the conversion of the building to an HDFC. There were 11 properties. Our building of the 11 properties had the least amount of work to do, and our scope of work was around $160,000, plus about $100,000 in weatherization through the Manhattan Weatherization Program with Dan Reber. Well, it was very promising, and I was looking forward to the completion of the building as soon as possible. And unfortunately, the sponsor developer, instead of helping us, forced us into a situation of disrepair, kept insurance money after a fire, removed our gas system and our heat, then took a loan without telling us, feigned a foreclosure, forced us into foreclosure negotiations, and a sponsorship, a cosponsorship with local developer Don Kaposha. And so the renovation went from $260,000 to $6 million, and I was the first person to sign. To a temporary relocation apartment, I encouraged my other neighbors to do so as well because we'd had a vacate order on half the building. We'd made the repairs, and UHAB refused to remove the vacate order after the repairs were made. So I was looking forward to a beautiful apartment to return to. It's around 750 square feet, around $800 a month. And within two years, I learned that actually there were plans for an occupant to be in my apartment from Texas, a non-resident of New York. So I obliged and agreed to negotiate for alternatives per the relocation contract. And that actually became fodder for harassment, bullying. And I agreed to five or six different offers, and UHAB was dead-set on not going to let me back to the building or to 10th Street or to a building in Bushwick, because I spoke up and I had requested accounting. And that was not something they would want to address. And I was the coordinator for 15 years. And I have been unable to return. I'm still in the relocation apartment. I'm being evicted from there now. My next court date is on the 22nd with a trial. I've gone through all of these, trying to get representation through a dozen different legal service providers. I'm a low-income person, and a low-income person shouldn't have to have enough money for a high-income lawyer to defend my situation. I'm a senior citizen, and I was looking forward to returning to my home. I would be happy to work with any type of investigation in this matter. There's a lot more information than what I've provided today. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Annie. Any questions? Too many for this hearing. So I'll be following up with you as yours is an individual case. And I just want to thank you both for your time and hear you on the concerns about increasing rents. Thank you.
All right.
I'd now like to call up Christopher Leon Johnson, M.E. Green Cohen, Gregory Baggett, and Sharon Brown Jeter, or Jeter, apologies. You may proceed when ready.
All right, I'm ready now. Hi, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson, the record, and I support my boy Diocino with his fight against UHAB. It's a real corrupt nonprofit. I used to work in one of the buildings on Harlem, right in Sean Abreu's district, borderline Sean Abreu, I think is now Yusuf Salam district, in 115th area, the 100th area. And, yeah, it's really dirty. Those buildings are really dirty and really, really dirty and really nasty. It's not good for anybody to live in. This is like, this stuff with third-party transfer, anytime they, like, these nonprofits saying like, "This is going to benefit the tenants," it's never going to benefit the little person, never going to benefit these people here, the lady back there. It's only going to benefit these nonprofits. One thing I want to say to tell people like DiO and all the people that's fighting against this stuff is that you got to be careful of the people that act like they're fighting for you. I'm not talking about you, DiO, I'm talking about like, people like this little, little fat, little Wayne-looking Marquise Jenkins that size.
Let's keep our remarks, no personal attacks here, okay?
I understand, I understand. So like, Marquise Jenkins, the district leader of the 74th district, who is under Connor Rivera's thumb and who act like he's fighting for us and everybody else with RPPH, and he's not. Rivera takes money from developers. How do you have a person that leads an organization that's so-called fighting against the issue that is down with an elected official named Connor Rivera, who is a YIMBY, who is hell-bent on selling out Lower East Side to developers? And everybody know about Connor Rivera. So I tell people this, people have to be careful of these organizations like RPPH and these so-called community land trust organizations that is in pocket with these developers and in pocket with revenue to lead you guys astray. People got to start waking up to see like, who leading these stuff? Who's on the board? Who's the lead organizer? Who's who? Because they, and the thing is, these elected officials, I'm not saying that you, Perina, you don't be with them, but like, people like Sandy Nurse, who are scared of these organizations because all she care about is keeping her next term and making sure her people get their terms in office. And this is a big issue. A lot of elected officials, they're scared of these community land trust organizations that they shouldn't be. These community land trust organizations, they down with this stuff because they're reaping the rewards out of this. All this stuff is about putting, keep these nonprofits richer, and that's all it's about. And it's not just UHAB's, it's the other nonprofits that's under the Working Families Party and the New York City DSA. They're reaping the rewards out of this stuff too because they're part of this thing. And especially our city comptroller, Brad Pander, he's part of this stuff too. He's the ones that's, the one, the main thing that's in there.
You can conclude, okay?
I'm concluding now. Conclude. I respect you, I love you, as an elected official. Let's conclude. You people got to wake up. The third-party transfer is bad for business. They act like they're fighting for the little guy, they're not. All it's about is to take away property from the developers and the landlords and the property management companies. They don't prove of the ones that don't donate to their campaigns and giving it to these corrupt nonprofits that they know that all they're going to do is electioneer and electioneer and electioneer. This is all about votes, all about votes. So want to let go, take care, beware of these organizations like RPPH and the fraud Marquise Jenkins. Take care.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gregory Baggett from the Ableton Randolph Square neighborhood alliance, and I'm a consultant in principle with the New York Council for Housing Development Fund Corporations. I want to, or just want to say it's a little disheartening to, after over 50 years of listening to stuff about HDFCs, to still hear mostly failing stories about failing HDFCs when the vast majority of the buildings are doing well. I want to testify that the third-party transfer program has successfully preserved homeownership since its inception and has created homeownership opportunities from previously failing rental properties. Moreover, most TPT-converted HDFC corporatives often outperform those from the TIL program despite fewer opportunities for, fewer opportunities for resident education. So I want to thank you, Chairwoman Sanchez, for introducing this draft legislation and recognizing this program's historic potential to preserve and provide the promise of homeownership opportunities for many New Yorkers living in distressed properties. However, we have one concern. The proposed solutions to preserve these precious assets seem to replicate past ineffective approaches. One, reliance on monitors who represent the corporation's interests, not the city, the governmental agencies, or the residents. Oversimplified education programs tantamount to physics for poets that create permanent dependency on the provider. And three, involvement of paternalistic nonprofits with proprietary and territorial practices that hinder effective stewardship. I'd like to continue, I just have a paragraph. These approaches have proven inadequate in the past. We need innovative solutions that treat the management of these scarce assets as the businesses that they are, while supporting the residents and boards to whom these assets provide shelter with equity and empathy. We urge you to consider establishing an asset management trust with expanded authority over the capital budget of these corporations, implemented mandatory tailored business education, engaging neutral business experts for unbiased direction and insight. And lastly, converting corporations at risk to nonprofit HDFCs, HDFCs that's part of the community management program or community land trust HDFCs. In closing, addressing these concerns will ensure that the HDFC portfolio continues to create sustainable homeownership opportunities for future generation. And one last point. I wanted to make a pitch for Intro 0958 to create homeownership opportunities for persons earning 70% to 165% AMI. This bill, which was introduced by the speaker, is in perfect alignment with this draft legislation because most young professionals, first-time homeowners, retired, older adults with retirement, and returning graduates earn too much to qualify for many of the city's preservation housing programs and yet too little to access the free market. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Baggett. That was very helpful. We'll be following up with you if it's all right, if you have recommendations on those business professionals, the neutral business professionals that you mentioned. Thank you. And lastly, I'd like to call up via Zoom Michelle de la Ouz, Junior Gonzalez, Tanisha Grant, and Deborah Blake. Okay. Hearing no others signed up to testify? I'm sorry, we can speak off the record. Your time has expired, and I'll need to close the hearing. But just hearing no other new individuals signed up to testify, I just want to thank everyone who took the time to testify today. And we'll be collating all of the feedback received and moving forward, hopefully with a successful bill. Thank you all.